All right, we are going to open the Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, December 21st, 2020 at 4:31. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to testify in the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have Mr. Cooleyard for public comment. Catherine, can you just set that up for us? If it works.
I just need him to unmute. Mr. Cooleyard, if you could unmute.
Maybe.
Unmute.
Can you unmute him?
I'm trying. It says I have, I think he's got it clicked on his, on his end, so I can't tap there.
Can you send him a message?
Yep.
Can you click your heels? No?
I don't think we're gonna hear him.
All right, well, if he decides to be able to unmute himself, we'll jump back to him. So, Jason, do you want to read the warrants?
Sure.
I didn't give you a warning this time, but.
I make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2125 in the amount of $169,552.53.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Anima's?
I make a motion to approve bill warrant 2125 in the amount of $554,942.92. I would take down to the town at $140,760.10. Water and sewer, $44,706.82. Payroll withholding, $3,704.98. Light bills, $318,376.28. Grants and revolving, $38,069.74. And debt, $9,325.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anima's? Thank you. Next up, we have appointments. Elaine Muse of Groveland to the Langley Adams Library Board of Trustees effective 12/9/2020.
Make a motion for approval.
Second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I personally know Elaine Muse, and I know her to be a very intelligent person and of good character, and I think she'll make a great addition to our Library Board of Trustees.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Anima's? Fantastic. No one from the Board of Health is?
I thought Deb was gonna be on Zoom.
Oh, Deb Hall is on, okay.
Yeah.
Somebody?
Deb, you're up. If you can unmute. Oh, there she is. Can you hear us?
There she comes, right on, take cue. Damn.
Claire just walked in.
Uh-oh, trying to turn her down?
No, we just got to your agenda.
Hold on.
There's discrepancies between what the DPH says and what we have, and it's just because it's active versus the number of positive cases that are contested for the town, so. She's gonna give the update on that.
Sorry, what was that? That was active versus total recorded? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because the DPH said that we have like 66 new cases, and that goes from like November 29th to December 12th. And that was at the height of everything, but we only had, which was accurate as of last Monday, we had 18 active cases. Because people are coming on and off quarantine all the time.
Right.
Like me, I'm off quarantine today, so.
Yay!
Released on good behavior. Claire, anything else to add?
I didn't hear the beginning of this.
That was the beginning.
But, right now, we have 173 cases total from the beginning in March, okay? And what Deb said is absolutely correct, okay? The way the state does the case and determine what color we're in, okay, is every two weeks. Okay, so that number is two weeks, okay?
Yeah, it's a rolling number.
Period. And our numbers change by the day as people come off of their isolation or quarantine. So we're never gonna, hopefully, never gonna have 66 cases, you know.
Hopefully, yeah.
Active. I hope.
Okay.
So.
Anybody have any questions for Claire?
How many active cases did you say were presently?
We have 20, 20. And quite a few people came off today, actually. I called quite a few. That's what I, that's one of the reasons why I'm late.
Do you have anything else?
I had a question just about regarding the vaccine and the notification. On how will that information flow? Will it go through you, or will it go directly to like the first responders, or what? I know you're not gonna give the vaccines, but I'm just.
No, we actually received a notice from the state saying that they were looking for sites, you know, to probably collaborate.
Oh, okay.
Like maybe two, three towns together.
Yep.
They're looking for a site to give the shots.
Okay.
Okay? So, I mean, the only thing I could think of was possibly the way it's constructed is easy, because people could like start down the other end, okay?
And go through it all?
And go through and have everything marked out every six weeks.
How many communities do they want you to group together?
I don't think they really said, you know, I mean, you can't have too many, because then it would be like.
No, I was just thinking that.
It won't be doable if we try to do like four communities.
No, but if we have three small communities in the school district, then doesn't that make sense to do that?
I don't know. I honestly don't know. I'd have to see more of what they have in mind to do hour-wise, you know? Because like, I'm not sure how many hours they're gonna put into this, and how many people. I mean, I couldn't give shots for eight hours.
Right.
My arm would be falling off, you know?
Correct, yeah.
So we have to find out more about it.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I certainly would love to be part of it, you know, and, you know, contribute to this.
Yeah.
As a community, but, you know, we have to make sure we can do it.
Correct. Makes sense. Thank you.
Ed, do you have anything to add?
Yes, that was, that was one of my questions, but the other one, would it?
I think that.
Yeah, you gotta mute that.
What's the possibility that the, through the Board of Health, using the CARES money, that they could offer testing for town residents? I know some communities are using, using CARES money. I know it runs out the end of the year. It doesn't look like it's gonna be extended, or I haven't heard anything.
I'm not sure how much money's left. You know, that probably is a, more of a question for Deb and the accountant, I would think.
I'm managing the money now.
Oh, you're man, oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's not so much, and incidentally, it's a question, it's not so much a matter of do we have the money? We've got plenty of unallocated money, put it that way. The question is, it runs out in nine days, eight days. Practically speaking, to organize something like that in eight, nine days, it'd be pretty much impossible. Now, there is a reconciliation period starting a week after January. I just got all the materials on it. Quite a volume of material, and I'm just starting to assimilate it. During that reconciliation period, which will run about a month, they're gonna allow you to do more things to burn up any surplus that you had. And we've got some, because we got an allocation, and we applied in two rounds. And if all of our applications were approved, most of which are still pending, then we would still have a balance left, and so we would be able to do this. We're trying to buy three fogging machines at the request of the police chief, and all the department heads agreed these would be great machines to have. You've seen them, they're the ones that.
Yep, we have much fog.
Fog, and right now, we've got sprayers, but they're, they spray a heavy dose of liquid. The foggers fog, and they're much, much better. They get into spaces that you can't get into. Now, if we buy those foggers, that's gonna grab about 50,000 of our remaining money. That would still leave us a pretty good balance. So, maybe in the reconciliation period, we might be able to do something. I'm not gonna promise that, because the logistics of setting it up, getting the test kits and everything is pretty, you know, it's pretty overwhelming. There are, there is a website with, I think, 40-something test sites in the state.
Yep.
Where people can go and get free tests.
Funny.
And all they gotta do is, if you Google "free COVID test site," you'll see half a dozen in this immediate area where people can go and get them. If they're symptomatic, they're gonna get faster testing, faster appointment, and faster turnaround. If they're non-symptomatic, but they've been exposed, they're gonna get a test and quick turnaround. If they're non-symptomatic and not exposed, and they just wanna get one, they're gonna go to the bottom of the list, and I don't even know if they'll get tested. Because test kits are limited, and they're not just testing anybody who just wants to get tested. You're gonna have some reason to do it. So I hope, hopefully, that's helpful.
And how about the vaccine for town residents? And I know you mentioned something about that. Is that something that the CARES money can be used for?
No, but the good news is, that's gonna be part of the rollout once, once they're done with first, frontline healthcare workers. And here's a protocol, and they've made arrangements through the federal government and then down to the states for who's gonna get those vaccines and who's gonna give them. Now, once it gets to the level of the public, we don't have any information yet, but what they're looking at is they're considering training local EMS workers and others. Every town has something, I forget the exact name of it, it's like a public health corps, volunteers that live in town that volunteered in the event of an emergency to help. So they're gonna activate those folks. EMS level, paramedic level, licensed providers are already licensed to give parental injections, needles. EMS basic, which is what we have, are not licensed to do that, but they're talking about training them specifically just to do COVID vaccines. And it, so it's all in flux right now, put it that way, but a lot of discussion and work is going on. And I participate in conference calls every week to, about the conversation. I'm sure you are too. So we'll keep the board advised. Right now, there's no specific planning, but it is going on. They are aware of the fact that in order to inoculate a town population, they're gonna need a lot of people given, able to deliver needles, venip, IM intramuscular injections. So there's an awareness, this is gonna take a while. It may end up that they just put it through CVS and Walgreens, and it's like they're dealing with the flu shots now, just go in there and get your shot. It may be that they do something different. It's all being looked at.
Because you, the, some of the, as far as the, the testing, some of the elderly residents, they're not, if they don't drive, they have to get a ride to one of these testing sites. So if there was something that was done in the town of Groveland itself, it might be a benefit to them. And you see, some of these people from, even like Nichols Village or out back here, when they get on the bus and they go over to Market Basket, they don't have a vehicle to be able to do that, so it's very inconvenient for them to, to go get tested when they don't have any transportation to one of the facilities, and they're not able to sit there and wait for two, two hours, or three hours, whatever it's taken. It just seems to me that it would be helpful to some of our residents to be able to do that.
If you folks could identify a place where we could take them, we've got the minivans and the staff, we could certainly get seniors to the test site to be tested.
Methuen has a site of Stop the Spread. You don't need an appointment, and you don't need to call. You just look up Stop the Spread. Those are the places you can just go to. They had one in Haverhill for a while. I went to it after work. No appointment, no referral, just drive up. These one in Methuen is a walk-up. There's one in Lawrence that's a walk-up. Anything under Stop the Spread. There's no referral, no appointment needed, just go. But most, most people have a doctor. If you go through your doctor's office, as I did when I was quarantined, if you get an appointment, you don't wait in line. So keep, they should keep that in mind. They should get an appointment, because then you just go right in and get right out.
Well, I'm gonna meet with the Board of Health on Wednesday, and I'd be happy to ask, I think it's something, if we were gonna show up with a busload or a couple of minivans full of seniors, it's something we'd wanna coordinate, not have people waiting. So I think the Board of Health would be the folks to coordinate it through.
Would it be a little more realistic or better to, you know, bring the site?
To the seniors?
The seniors?
Absolutely, if that can be arranged, yeah.
Might be easier all the way around.
So is this something we can, you're gonna be at the meeting Wednesday, right?
This is the first I've heard of it.
This assumes there's a busload of people that need to be tested, though. You're getting way ahead of everything.
Well, we can talk to the Board of Health and see what arrangements we could make. We certainly have the capability to either get seniors there or bring, you know, if it's available, bring testing to the seniors. We can do that with Council on Aging assets, but it's really a matter of getting the kids.
That would be more convenient to bring the site to, to them.
You know, because they would have a dining room or, you know, some common area that we could use.
We can do that.
To do the testing.
Yeah. I mean, for that matter, if we're able to set that up, I know our EMS employees would like to do it too, because the closest test center for EMS drop-in that I know of is Foxborough. We were just talking about it to the chiefs the other day, and they were saying they'd love to test their people on a periodic basis, but, you know, Foxborough's not practical to go to. And that right now is EMS test site.
But there's open sites. I mean, if you look at the map, there's a lot of the Stop the Spread sites. There's ones in Lawrence, there's ones in Methuen. No appointment, no referral.
Ed, anything else?
No, no, that answered the question, thank you.
They've done a good job.
Deb, did you have something else?
No, I was just gonna say, they're like what Kathy's saying, there's plenty of sites around that you can go and get tested at. And you don't have to, generally, you don't have to pay. You give your license, sometimes they ask you for your insurance card, and, and that's it, and you're done. I mean, I've gotten tested probably four or five times already, and I've never paid for anything.
Is there one nearby here?
Methuen, Methuen's not bad.
Methuen's got one?
Yep, they have a Stop the Spread one.
Jason, you have anything to add?
The only question I had is, I just wanted to confirm that the bulk of the vaccines for the public aren't supposed to be available until April, right?
March or April.
Something like that.
So it's gonna be some time to get all that.
Well, they are. Work something out by then.
They are throwing out some test balloons and asking, you know, what would you do if they were available in February? I don't know that that's practical, but I think, you never know.
Yeah, because with the, some people being allergic and things like that, I think that would have to be in consideration when you think about where they're gonna be administering the vaccines.
Well, if they went to a drugstore, you know, in a car, and they had an allergic reaction, you know. I don't know if they're gonna do them, you know, if people stay in a car. I think they'd have to go inside, but, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare.
A couple of things.
With all those people lined up. I don't know how they're gonna control it.
One is, I haven't read through all 5,539 pages of the new relief bill that Congress is supposed to pass. But my understanding is there's significant money in it for testing, distribution of the vaccine. Next point is, I think if, at the Walgreens, CVS, if there was an allergic reaction, they probably have a very good supply of EpiPens, where in somebody's home, that might not be available, so it might not be a good idea. Thirdly, I.
I believe in going and giving shots at people's homes.
Yeah. Third, I understand that the FDA just approved recently, in the last, last couple of days, a new home test.
Yeah.
For COVID, which may really be something that's extremely convenient to a lot of people, especially the seniors. Now, they don't have to leave their home. And what I understand is gonna be very similar to like a pregnancy test. You're gonna get immediate results. So that's gonna be a benefit.
But can you get your hands on the test?
Well, I don't know how, again, they just, the FDA just approved this within the last week, so I'm not sure of the details. But I know, you know, typically, once the FDA releases something like that, it typically rolls out pretty quick. So the availability of that may be quick, and that may be something that can, that can help out some of the seniors that can't get around very well. They can do it at their home in their own convenience. So just wanna throw that out there as some, some options that are going to be available shortly, if not already, hopefully.
Well, shouldn't we include the Council on Aging on this? I would assume they're in contact with seniors that might need some help, so I would, I would throw the ball their way. And see if there are seniors who are trying to get tested. I wasn't aware that we had that many.
I don't know how many there are.
No, that wanna be tested. I'm sure everyone wants a vaccine at some point, but I'm talking about just the testing.
I'm not sure how many wanna get tested.
Right, because we have a van, right? And won't the van take them to a doctor's office? I thought that's what it's for.
Yep.
Yeah, so they can make an appointment, and the van could take them to the doctor's office.
Yep.
They don't have to drive. Right?
Well, hopefully, these home tests come out, and they don't have to, nobody has to drive anywhere.
And you don't have to send it in?
From what I understand, it's something like a. It's something like a pregnancy test. You, you get.
Yeah, okay.
Immediate results.
I'm not saying, just.
You have COVID, you don't have to, you know, nobody's half-pregnant, right? You're either, you're aunt, right?
I know, Bill.
Well, we, I think we're aware of the board's concerns, and I know, I didn't realize Deb is on the phone.
Yes.
On the teleconference, so when we meet with the Board of Health Wednesday, we could chat about this morning, get back to you if we've got some info to share. And if, and if you hear anything, shoot me an email. It would be helpful.
Absolutely. Once I get through to 555, you know, pages. Couple more questions real quick, is how's the contact chasing? Contact tracing going? God, that's a tough.
Three times.
Is that all?
Schools?
Yeah, we all said now, we have a good communication set up.
Seems to be, seems to be working well.
Okay, I did get emails at a couple of the winter sports.
There's been like a lot of.
Hockey, hockey is on hold for a couple of weeks.
There's been an email like every other day.
Yeah, just about. So that's all in place, that's all working well, everything's working well. Okay, good.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think that's.
Deb, any final comments?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so. I think we're all set. You know, we voted on allowing the middle school to use the gym for basketball. Under duress, I still think it's a bad idea, obviously, with now it's going off hockey and with all the towns being in red.
Yeah.
But that being said, it's, you know, it's, it is what it is, and the parents wanted it, so things happen.
Well, that decision might be, that decision might be changed for you, you know, depending on what the state says in the next couple of weeks, so. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you guys' input. If we get any more information before the next meeting, we'll definitely update everybody, especially on vaccines or testing and whatever else comes up. But we'll definitely have that information, hopefully, Kevin, on that meeting you have this week for the next meeting in early January. So we're gonna move back to public comment for Al, who I guess is back on.
I just say a thank you to Claire Walsh for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is it working now?
He was on with an iPhone, but now it's back on.
All right.
I'm gonna ask him to unmute.
You only get three strikes over here, so that's two.
Mr. Cooleyard, are you there?
Going once. Going twice. Moving on.
Moving on.
Okay, we're, we're gonna move to the light department. Hey, Kevin, I tried to get you out of here as soon as possible. So the topic was brought up again at a couple meetings ago about Comcast and Xfinity raising their prices on us again. We don't really have any competition in town, and the thought came up, I think Mr. Watson brought it up, about asking the electric department what their thoughts were on providing the service of internet, at least in town. And I know that was brought up a couple years ago, and there was a substantial amount of work and effort that wanted to something like that, but I think, do you have more information on that, based on cost and effort and anything that might go into it?
Yep, so I did. So for those of you that don't know me, my name's Kevin Snow. I'm the general manager. I'm also a first-class lineman with the overall department. So yes, we did get noticed that, you know, you had some questions about, you know, bringing cable into town. So can you tell me, is it cable TV? Are we looking at internet, a combination of both?
I think it'd be whatever might be possible at this point. I mean, currently, we have high-speed internet through Comcast.
Correct.
And only Comcast. We have DSL, I think, through 18T maybe.
Yep.
Which is basically useless. So the thought, and I had worked on this a couple of years ago with the state, and I went into Boston, I don't know how many times, to talk with Senator Tar's office about what we can do to bring competition in town. And it's just, it's nothing that the board is preventing from happening, it's that companies don't wanna put the infrastructure in, because the payoff isn't really that great. The return on investment isn't that great.
And that's exactly the thing that we found, you know, ourselves. So after, you know, learning you wanted me to come here and, you know, talk to you about what would need to be done to have this, you know, go on, I reached out to the 41 different municipal light departments in Massachusetts, sent them all emails asking who offered cable, who offered internet, you know, and any other insight that they give me. This is all a very high-level view of, you know, how it goes around here. So of the 41 MLPs in Massachusetts, only two of them offer cable right now.
Oh.
Cable is effectively dead. There are some MLPs down on the South Shore that used to offer cable. They've done away with that.
Do they offer internet, or?
They do offer internet.
Okay.
But they no longer offer, you know, like the standard box that we would have.
Right.
What they do is they push everybody over to the ISP, they throw you on a gig plan.
Right.
Or 250 megabyte plan, and they ask.
Stream everything.
Like, yeah, a Roku or whichever your choice is, so they're pushing everybody to streaming, because the franchise fees get so high.
Yes.
They were having to offer, you know, like you guys know, just all kinds of stuff that people didn't want. So cable itself has just kinda gone to the wayside.
That's understandable. Everyone's streaming everything anyways.
So internet-wise, eight of the 41 offer an ISP.
Okay.
But the overwhelming response from the other general managers that I talked to was that providing residential cable and ISP was incredibly risky. Most of them were having a hard time turning any kind of profit with it, you know, and if they did, those that had cable, it was being thrown right back into cable to pay for that off. They were just coming back at neutral.
Okay.
We have a large MLP that's down in Southeast Mass. They actually, limited cable as a standalone, and they ended up focusing on the ISP. That's the one I just told you about, where they tell people, you know, hey, get a Roku, come to our service.
Right.
Again, they're just making their money back with that.
Did they mention what the initial investment, as far as time, infrastructure, and cost would be for something like that?
I'm actually gonna get to that in a second.
Okay, sorry.
Nope, no big deal, no big deal. So we had another one down in Southeast Mass, ended up selling off its entire system. Fraction of what they invested. Connecticut, another utility, similar experience, they built out their system to the $220 million. They ended up selling it to Comcast for $500,000.
That's a good investment.
So you can kinda see where this is going right now. Western Mass, we have another one that's selling off its ISP to Comcast. They're gonna be on the hook for $70,000 after getting the money from Comcast for the construction bonds. So this is what we're kinda finding in the industry when we, you know, we look at this stuff. And, you know, we appreciate where everybody says, hey, Groveland Light Department's such a great, you know, they do a great job, they vary responses, everything else, but it's a completely different business. We capture 100% of the business here in town. We're a municipal monopoly.
Right, right.
Nobody else has a choice.
Right, right, right.
Cable and internet is totally different.
Yeah.
You're not guaranteed a take rate. Now, you know, I could gamble and say that, you know, maybe I'll get. You know, I could gamble and say that, you know, maybe I'll get sixty percent, maybe I'll get seventy percent, but it's not a sure thing. And, and that's not something that, you know, I myself, and I don't think my board members would really be looking to take the risk on.
Especially if you gotta invest ten million dollars or whatever the number would be to develop the infrastructure and then run the lines for it.
So, you know, one of the things you can do, you can do a feasibility study on it, you know, feasibility studies run around ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars or so. Ipswich had one done in twenty nineteen. And what Ipswich ended up finding was that, oh, Ipswich also has fiber in the air already. So they have a ring going around, it supplies municipal buildings and so on and so forth. So that's already in place. And they found that, um, Fujitsu's study was, uh, their most optimistic, excuse me, their most optimistic scenario, there was only a sixty-five percent of the cash flow from that would be positive, coming in to cover it.
That's not good.
Again, that's not really something I don't think would be beneficial for the light department to, you know, look into. West Boylston, on the other hand, is actually putting up ISP right now, they're excited about doing it, but they're also an underserved, uh, community in the state when it comes to broadband. So they're able to get grants and stuff to come in there and help offset some of those costs. And along the way, they're hooking into Shrewsbury and I believe it's like West, West Boylston.
Do you know what the definition of underserved means?
I don't, but there is a website that you can go to and I can actually forward it to you.
Yeah, I'd be like to, I'd like to understand what that definition is, is it just that there's nothing there or is it, there's only one provider there?
It's, honestly, I don't know, I don't wanna speak out of turn.
Right, cuz we don't have any competition here.
You know, so there's other things we have to consider too, we'd have to increase our staff, I would look at probably having higher, you know, one or two more office staff to handle calls, we'd have to expand our hours because let's face it, a lot of times the problems that we have happen after we get home where the internet's too slow or we can't get anywhere, email, cable channels aren't working, you know, one or two more texts to come in and just specifically do the internet portion of all that. So we have that, we have to look at. One of the things that we've kinda discussed that could be an option in the future would be to do that municipal ring of fiber. If we did that, it wouldn't be for residential service, it would be to connect all the buildings here in town. We'd be using that for, you know, our smart metering systems right now, which are currently cellular. We'd also be able to bring the water and sewer department onto that if that's something that they wanted to do.
That's something you spoke about when I was at your meeting, Michael, about a year or so ago, so you're taking the, the meters out and going to another non-cellular system, right?
We would think about doing it, we actually just put up all brand new four G collectors out there, they pull all the information from the smart meter and throw out town.
Okay.
Into the central hub for a building, so that's probably eight years out or so.
Okay.
So in looking at numbers for installation, they're really all over the place. And what I ended up doing was taking West Boylston's number, which was the lowest number of all of them, and they said that fiber could be running at eighty thousand dollars a mile. We have seventy-one miles of transmit, or distribution line.
Eighty thousand dollars a mile?
Yes.
Just checking.
That's with us installing it.
Right.
That's me taking my four line crew and myself out there in the buckets, putting it in the electric space and putting it up, that's not lighting it up, that's not anything else.
So what's that, six million dollars?
Just short of that, it's like five point five.
I'll go with math, that's crazy.
Five point six million, roughly, give or take a couple hundred thousand.
You know, again, these are all rough numbers because there's some that are even higher than that. To nail it down, you'd really have to have that study done, you know, and they would come in and say, well, yeah, we expect you, since you only have one cable provider in town, to get fifty-five percent on the customers.
What does that mean, you know? And then what is the cost that you would charge for that service compared to the current provider?
Correct.
And I think is, I think Ed probably had more questions, but one of the comments he made is like, you know, I'd rather pay Grove and Electric the service fee than Comcast. But, do you have more?
No, I'm open to any questions anybody have.
Yep.
It, it, through the research that I've done, uh, the municipalities that run the internet through the, uh, through their electric company. They're up, they're able to offer highest speed internet capabilities than what Comcast is doing. Or those around, uh, uh, south of Boston. Why is it that they can, they can offer highest speed internet than what Comcast i- is able to do?
See, so I don't see that, in going through and visiting all the different MLP websites that did offer that internet service, they all, all offered basically the same tiers, a two fifty megabyte, a five hundred megabyte, a seven fifty and a one gig. And all the pricing was right about the same. So I don't know how we can say that, you know, they're offering a faster one, I assume Comcast, sorry, I'm not a resident here, but I, I assume Comcast offers like a gig speed service here and those other tiers as well.
They do, the top tier is gig and then there's, I think, two hundred, six hundred, seven fifty or one gig.
When you mentioned that, that, uh, uh, most of them were, uh, weren't making much of a profit on, uh, on the internet, what did they charge, uh, the subscriber, you know?
Right around sixty-nine dollars seemed to be about the average for a, like a gig speed connection.
Sixty-nine dollars? I think it's a hundred and thirty for Comcast.
I think there was one that was actually down at like thirty-nine, but I think it was like an introductory rate for, I'd say, six months or so.
I, I would think that once your infrastructure is up, that the actual line maintenance cost would be, would be minimal. The initial, the initial, uh, uh, cost to run your wires would be expensive, but once they're up, that, that's, that's about it, isn't it?
It's the tech that's all the other small pain in the butts that come with, with running a business like that. It's not like electricity where electricity is basically on or off. The definition of good service with a, you know, ISP or something like that varies depending on the individual and their experience with it. Somebody may think their internet's running slow and it may be that they have too many things running on their computer and they're not sure that, they don't know that that's what happening. You know, we're not, I'm no expert on it, I'm still learning, this is only like two weeks into it right now. But, you know, all the indicators to me in talking to my peers just say it's not a good business to get into as an MLP. I wish I had better news for you, I just, unfortunately, I don't at this time.
This is the same information that came up three years ago, when the same topic presented itself as a possible option, and I think that was the same information that came back, it's not a viable solution to move forward with. Maybe it is in a couple more years when, you know, costs come down and, um, capabilities go up and maybe you don't need that overhead of people and extra equipment or whatever it is to, to manage such a service, but. I'm sorry, Ed, do you have more questions?
You, you would quote it a price per mile. Is that, uh, hiring a company to come in and do, that's, that's you people doing it yourself?
That's, yeah, that's with the municipal light plant installing it themselves in electric space.
And, and how long would it take to, to wire up the whole town?
Man, I'm gonna say it would be years. You're looking at probably two to three years to get that fiber up in the air, that's not with connections to homes.
And that would, that would mean additional manpower on the street?
Oh, yeah. That's including myself going out there and doing stuff too.
Yeah.
You know, and that means that we have to put off all those other capital projects that we have out there and the maintenance, we, we've gotta cut it out somewhere to get that up.
Would, would that require somebody that's specially trained in that or, or, uh, the lineman capable of doing it?
So if we were to put the, the fiber optics up, we can do that, that's the electric space, that's what we would look to do, but it would have to be a rated person, so yes, it would have to be a, a rated lineman, either from Groveland Light Department or from a, a contractor that was rated to be up in the higher voltage.
All right, thank you.
No worries.
Jason, you have any?
No.
Kathy, you have some questions?
Um, just off a topic on solar, do you allow homeowners in Groveland to put solar on their roofs or not?
Of course we do.
Okay, for some reason I heard that people couldn't do it if they wanted to and I just was curious about.
No, it's not that you can't, you don't, you don't benefit from banking into the system because it's not a gr- national grid, correct?
We don't operate as national grid does with the net metering, no, we don't offer the same rate. So national grid offers basically full retail. So what you pay for your electricity that you buy from them, you get back in the, you know, in the, in what you sell back to them.
Right.
Whereas we don't, we pay you the bulk rate that we would pay in the NEMA load zone, which is where you would, where Groveland lays in Boston. So it's the delivery point.
So you still would pay for?
You get a credit, but it's not much of a credit, where with national grid, you would get, say, twenty-four, that's not even twenty-four cents, ten cents on the electricity portion. We would give you two cents or three cents, depending on the month.
Okay, but, and then the solar field that we have, we never see a credit on our electric bill for that because of the contract we did?
Correct.
Which is too bad because it would've been nice to see a credit.
I think the cost to put solar on your house vastly outweighs the benefits.
I'm not interested in doing that personally, but I just.
Somewhere down the road yielding a, a positive gain.
I was actually very interested in putting in my house at one point, believe it or not, because the feds were offering such great incentives on it.
Yeah.
That it kinda made sense, it was gonna be very small pocket, this small money coming out of my pocket to install it on the house. The other things you need to think about is, you need to look at your roof, is your roof gonna be able to survive having that up there?
Right, yeah.
You don't wanna put a new, brand new solar system on a roof that's, you know, it's fifteen years, twenty years. Because now your roof's gonna fail before your solar system.
How about like putting a solar field on town land, like the power town buildings or something like that, is that viable?
Not really, we're actually already almost so oversubscribed with solar here in town. So on a bright sunny day in the summertime, we can actually power just about everything in here.
With our solar?
In the entire town, with the solar. We've actually got a system down there that will reduce the amount of solar that that field puts out. Because we don't wanna have energy flowing back into the national grid system, back into the transmission system. We're not set up with relaying for that down at the substation.
So how do our ratepayers see that enormous amount of solar on their bill, that's what I'm wondering?
So in the case of that, we have a PPA, a purchase power agreement.
Yep, I've seen that.
With that company and we pay a fixed cost per megawatt. And it's actually, I think it's the best rate that we have of all of our PPAs right now.
So that's reflective of the solar power, okay, thank you.
I, I got a question on that. Uh, on, on the solar, off the top of your head.
Sorry.
Yeah, me too. You didn't have to laugh. How many people i- in Groveland have solar panels on their roof? And you know how many of them that own it as opposed to how many that are leasing them?
So I don't know about owning and leasing, but we do have about seventeen.
Seventeen?
Owns in town, yes, right now, that have them.
That, that's it.
Yeah, just to drag the discussion back to where it originated. It doesn't sound like this is a very sound financial investment at this time, given the lands, the current landscape and the technological impediments to doing something like that. I mean, I, I, I'm all in favor of saving on my internet bill, but, uh, not at the cost of, of what you're describing. It just seems that this present moment, it just cost prohibitive to even, um, engage in a night, you know, a, a plan to do this anytime in the future, would you agree?
My bigger worry about some of this too is that, you know, if we go ahead and put it up, we could be at end of life already with, you know, fiber optic drops to the homes.
Right.
We already hear about five G and, you know, how they wanna come into towns. And I think that's probably another discussion that we're gonna have to have at some point, when something eventually goes, or somebody comes to us to put something on the poles here in town. But it's my belief that at some point, that's the way that people are gonna push things. So that they no longer have to deal with the drops going to the homes. It's all wireless and you just have that wireless receiver at your house and you take your service from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're seeing the same thing with cable subscriptions, which is how we get the revenue. It, it's only on cable subscriptions. And they continually go down and down and down each year because people are finding other alternatives to gain access to the media they like. And that puts us in a, in a, in a bind with our capital infrastructure here, as far as the money we can get from Comcast. Because of that dwindling market, we see dwindling revenue from it. It is what it is, right?
It is.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in.
Glad to be here.
Appreciate all the input and, like I said, maybe in a couple of years, things will change or maybe in a year or two, that five G service will be on poles and we'll just have little units in the house that we can feed off of. Or we can just get, uh, the MiFi's from Verizon or something for five G and use that, that's another option too.
If anybody's got any questions, feel free to email, email me up at the light department or give me a call and I'll, I'll get any answers I can for you.
Awesome, thank you for coming in, I appreciate it.
No worries.
Yes, thank you, Kevin.
All right, we are on to fiscal twenty-two revenue expense forecast. Kathy, did we ever get Al back?
Bobby, Zach, that's gonna be on next meeting.
Okay.
It'll be till next year.
Yeah, that's a whole nother year, but that's fine.
The problem wasn't too urgent.
So, Kevin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so this is, um, an illustration for the board to show what our projected revenue would be for fiscal twenty-two, July one, twenty-one to June thirty, twenty-two. And it compares, um, our expenditures, a sort of hypothetical set of expenditures to that revenue and it says basically, what's it all look like? Now, the, the purpose of this is to identify a problem if one is going to emerge before it happens and then engage the board and the finance committee in a conversation about, okay, what would you like to do? The good news is, we don't have a problem. Which I have to tell you honestly, was a little surprising, but here's the main assumptions that go into this. So first thing, the tax levy projected for fiscal twenty-two is pretty close. The new, um, what I've done is, I've taken the current tax levy and increased it by the statutory amount, uh, three point, two point five percent. Then I've assumed a hundred and sixty thousand of new growth. And as you can see from the current year and the prior year, that's pretty consistent with what we've been doing. You've got a large forty B that will be, start building out in the spring, which is probably gonna add substantially to the tax base next year. So I think that new growth number is a pretty conservative projection. And then, excuse me, the debt exclusion number to a million six is a plug number because whatever debt exclusion is that you raise, it's offset dollar for dollar by the debt exclusion override votes that you've taken. And you've done one on Bagnell, one on Whittier, obviously the new junior high, high school and a fire truck. So the amount that we need to raise to pay those bonds is offset exactly by the revenue, so that's a plug number, but that washes. Um, local receipts, I basically projected those at the same place they are this year, i.e. no increase. Local receipts is composed of many, many, many revenue categories, some of those are going down and some are going up. So as you might assume, building permits are going up, motor vehicle exercise is going down. But, you know, on balance, rough and tough, I think a, um, level projection is not gonna be hugely off. Cherry sheet aid, I had a conference call with our, um, with Senator Tar and our state rep, um, last, um, era, last, um, uh, Wednesday. And they indicated that the conventional wisdom, which is consistent with what I told you before from a conference call with town managers last week, is a ten percent reduction in local aid. Now, there's lots of categories in local aid, some are gonna go up, some are gonna go down, the education ones are probably going up, the chapter seventy-eight. School busing and spend may go down, but there may be relative equanimity there. Where you're probably gonna see a substantial cut is in unrestricted local aid. And that's gonna be that rough and tough ten percent. So what I did is I took gross, um, local aid, gross cherry sheet aid at about a million dollars, dropped it ten percent, that's a conservative projection, um, but I think it'll be spot on. And then forty thousand in a government from the light department, and that's for, um, overhead costs that are support that we give them, that they pay us for. So that's doing their payroll and their, uh, insurances and stuff like that. So, that comes out to, um, a little bit more revenue projected for fiscal twenty-two than the current year. So current year, we're at nineteen one, I'm projecting nineteen five, most of that is in real estate taxation. I think as the board knows, um, you know, a twenty odd million dollar budget and, um, about seventy-five percent of that comes from real estate taxes. We, we don't have a ton of, of business, about six, eight percent of our base this year is business and industry. Ninety-two percent is residential, tiny little amounts for personal property and open space. Now, Dawn, on the expense side, what I did there is I took the current year's expenses as were voted at town meeting, bumped them two point five to see what would happen. Now, when I do it, at first I do it at two point five, which is, you're kinda looking for sorta, what's realistic? I could've started at two, I could've started at two and a half, I wouldn't go any higher than two and a half. And frankly, I thought I would have to back down off of two and a half, I thought there'd be a huge deficit. So I'd back down to two, then I'd back down to one and a half and get it to where it could balance. So I backed down to two and then I backed down to one and a half and get it to where it could balance. But at two and a half percent, it basically balanced. Now, this does assume that there's no budget busters in here, i.e. property casualty insurance is not going to climb unexpectedly. We have never bid our property casualty and I'm planning to bid it this year. And I suspect there will be a very beneficial result from that. Our, I just got the minutes from the GIC meeting last week. As you know, our employee health insurance is through the GIC. They are talking about a increased range between six and seven percent. That would probably qualify as a, as a substantial increase that would be challenging to absorb. Well, I will keep you tuned on what happens there because I follow it closely. It assumes no snow and ice deficit and these other things, expenses would be pretty much level. So a two point five percent increase is kind of what I'd call a level services budget, meaning it's all the services we do now. It's not going to be new employees, but it is going to be, you know, giving a cola to the employees of some sort to offset inflation. Normal budgetary growth for expenses. The school budget going up no more than two point five. And based on that, all of those assumptions, we would be about a hundred thousand dollars out of balance. So we'd need to use fifty thousand of overlay and fifty odd thousand of free cash or a hundred of free cash or a hundred of overlay. I mean, there's a lot of ways you can do this. We got one point one million in stabilization and you could tap some of that. So the bottom line here is that I think we can afford to have a business as usual budget without any draconian problems occurring because of that. And as I say, frankly, this is not an expected result. Most communities are struggling with their projections compared with their projected revenue and with the budgets that they're going to be able to have. A lot of towns are cutting. So I would say ironically, we're in a somewhat advantageous position. And it's largely, especially when you consider we're a community with ninety-two percent residential taxation supporting, you know, seventy, eighty percent of our entire budget, you don't expect this result. Now, there's one caveat in here that I want to be sure to explain to everybody. This assumes that we would continue to collect about ninety-nine percent of the taxes we levy. We are running so far this year at about that level. That's a normal level, which is extraordinarily high, by the way. The people of Groveland should be really given a round of applause because a ninety-nine percent tax collection rate is extremely high. Lots of communities dwell around in a nine, I mean, ninety-five percent is considered great, ninety-six, ninety-seven, super. He had a ninety-nine. That's pretty extraordinary. So kudos to the town. If it should become the case that a substantial number of people cannot pay their taxes this year and that ratio between what's billed and what's collected drops off, that could create quite a problem revenue wise. Now, because we're second lien holder of the federal government and because of tax title processing, the town never loses the tax money. We get it all in the future. But it can be a one or two or three year delay before you collect the revenue that you don't get in any given fiscal year. So if our revenue dropped, our collection ratio dropped five percent, that would be a big hit. That'd be about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit on our revenue picture, causing us, you know, to have to draw more out of reserve or, or cut budgets. So I will keep the board informed as things roll out. The next exercise is to get the budget message out, which I anticipate doing in the next few days and have the, the departments start preparing their budgets. Last year, you bought something called ClearGov, I think it's called. It's a piece of software and I have yet to figure out where that piece of software is hiding in the computer. I will figure it out. And we'll get it out to the departments to start putting their budgets in. Some of the departments are already working on budgets. They've been working on budgets and I've been giving them numbers that they need. Health insurance, things like that to, to get going on it. So I think it'll be a fairly quick turnaround. As soon as I find that ClearGov software in the computer and I can, you know, you have to take, enter in the two columns for the prior year's actual expenses, the current year budget. And then you got to blank out the last column and that's what the departments put their requests in. So I got to find that piece of software, prepare it and then send it out to everybody to do their, their bit. But I think that'll probably happen in the next few days. And I'd anticipate presenting the board with a budget in January as, you know, we talked about. I'll be pushing hard to get that done sooner rather than later. I don't want to make any promises, but you know, I'll give the departments a, they all indicated they can turn their budgets around in a couple of weeks. So, once I get the ClearGov budget software identified, get it set up and then get them, get that out to the departments. I would expect a couple of weeks later, I'll be able to give you a budget. So we're moving pretty aggressively on things. I'm very pleased with that. And if there's any input the board wants to provide, given this revenue forecast, I'd be more than happy to, to have that before we start writing budgets. But absent an instruction from the budget to, for some other purpose, I would instruct the departments to do a level services budget, meaning services you did this year, continued next year. Don't submit for new employees because obviously we don't have money for new employees. But if the board has some priorities where you want to see that message in some way altered, please tell me what it is and I'll be sure it's sent out.
Anybody have any questions for Kevin? Ed?
Not at this time.
Jason?
No.
Yeah. In the you got, you have the Penntucket budget for eleven-three, Essex for seven-eighty-one. I assume the two-thirty is Whittier? It's not labeled?
Oh, I'm sorry. Look at that. I'll be darned. Yeah, that's exactly what it is. Apologies.
No problem.
Not sure how that's drawn.
No.
The seven-eighty-one. You, huh?
Seven-eighty-one.
It's probably Whittier and two-thirty is probably Essex. Yeah, because we have
I'm looking at the one, yeah.
Less. And the two-thirty may be an overestimate because my understanding is we have less, we have less children in Essex this year than we've had in, in many years.
Yep, just got the call today and it's eight less students. Now, what the finance director told me is eight less students, she said for this year. Now, what I don't know yet, because I haven't had a chance to call her back yet. I was busy with something else today, which is going to be good news, Mr. Chairman, in a couple of minutes. But I got preoccupied with that. I didn't get a chance to call her back. What I don't know yet is if the drop in eight students affects the current year's assessment or to drop in eight students this year, which is going to roll into next year. I don't know. So as soon as I check with her.
I'm pretty sure you're going to find the answer is it's next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she did say in her
This year is already locked in with the number of students that have already applied and been accepted.
And she did say in her message in the voicemail that this does fluctuate and it can fluctuate dramatically in a given year. So she said, please give me a call so we can chat, so I can understand it better. But yeah, there's some good news there tentatively.
Yeah. We may not fluctuate this year much due to the circumstances we find ourselves in. Town budgets, I assume that the trash collection is rolled up into that five point six figure number. How much did you allow for an increase?
Two point five percent across the board. I just, this is just a gross kind of a snapshot. It's not trying to get at individual things and say, well, this one's going to go up by more than that and this one's going to go down. It's just sort of taking the whole flammel and saying, if it went up two and a half, what would happen compared to revenue?
Right.
Because some things I can tell you, Bill, are going to go up more than two and a half.
Well, I, I can absolutely promise you that.
Other things
But what I want to know is more specifically, we have a contract, I think, with JRM?
Yeah, it's
Voice management, voice management. And is that contract expiring this year?
Yes.
Two and a half percent maybe. I'm telling you, the, the recycle charges are through the roof.
Good note. Thank you.
He's actually losing money on recycling. I think last year, wasn't it? There was something with the numbers last year.
They're all losing money in recycling. And they're going to come after these cities and towns and municipalities to straighten that out, to at least break even, if not turn a profit on that. So I expect that line item to go up significantly. Also, with this COVID, there's been an increased amount of trash collection. I know my, the fellow that picks up my trash says sometimes he has to come back two times. What, what pre-COVID was a one day trip sometimes requires now a day and a half. Because of the increase in, in trash, because most people are home. So that might be something you want to
That's a good note.
Put in a fudge factor there.
Yeah.
And if we're, if we overshoot the target, it's easier to bring it back than to add it. You know what I mean? Once you cut the board too short, you, you can't lengthen it.
Good point.
Let's see. The snow and ice deficit, you're, you're
Knock on wood.
Yeah, I, 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 man, I hope you're right, but I got to believe that this is one of the years we're going to get whacked. I know last couple of years, the finance committee and, and much to their what shall I say? Much their intuitiveness have increased that budget line item every year. And I think it might not be a bad idea to increase it again this year. Because this snow has started early. The pattern looks like it's, we're going to be in for it. And I'd hate to be short on that item where we have to cut other major items. And I think that's about it right now. From the high level view is all I have questions to ask. Thank you.
Those are good points. And I would, I, you know, when I start the budgets, I'll, I'll do that. I'll create a reserve for snow and ice and I'll look at the call a current vendor. Not that he's necessarily going to win it, but at least have a compensation on what do you project. And I'll include those things. I mean, if ever there was a year when using your stabilization money to balance your budget was appropriate, it would be in the middle of this kind of a pandemic. Ordinarily, I'm thoroughly opposed to using one-time revenue to balance operating expense.
I'm with you. It's a tool in the toolbox, but I, in my opinion,
Yes.
it should be the last tool that we use.
Yep.
Because you don't know what the future's going to bring. And having that money in the piggy bank may be extraordinarily helpful down the road with the new high school building project and other things. I imagine this ten percent may turn into twenty percent. And then it may extend into the following year as well. Because we're not out of this COVID yet.
As we begin to get these numbers firmed up and the budget actually begins to come together, I'll be back to the board with an update on this and say, okay, it's looking okay. Or yeah, it's, it's going to run over. And are you comfortable with using stabilization or free cash or, you know, more one-time money in order to plug the budget? Now, this projection only calls for a hundred thousand and you've used more than that in past years of, of free cash. So right now, this would demonstrate much lighter use of one-time revenue than you've done in the last three years.
Well, we haven't used it to balance the budget. We've, we've, we've used it to put away money in capital. We've used it to put away money in stabilization. And we've used it to pay our obligation on the OPEB liability that we have that our children and grandchildren shouldn't have to pay for the bills we incurred. So we've been trying to be fiscally prudent and responsible in those areas and put money aside for, for down the road and, and to meet our obligations as far as OPEB, but not using it necessarily to balance the budget. And as far as the budget goes, besides the salary increases, are you instructing all the departments to level fund their, their budgets from last year?
Not level fund, not level fund. Level fund means you get the same number you get last year.
Right.
And you have to absorb whatever increases you have in whatever areas and cut elsewhere. Frankly, what will happen is I know they'll take personnel increases and they'll reduce expenses and those, you can't cut those expenses because now you get, you get the people and you don't have the tools for them to work. So this says the budget can go up a couple percentage points and still balance. Albeit with all the, all the caveats that are on that front page. So I'll tell them level services, meaning the same number of employees, same basic things you did this year, you can do next year. That automatically means the budget's going to go up to accommodate for inflation and, you know, labor costs, whatever they've got. The cost of living adjustment. So I anticipate the budgets will go up, but I'll tell them, don't go up more than two percent probably because that little difference between two and two and a half is probably what we're going to use to do some of these things you've been talking about. It'll create a little more of a margin.
Right. And I think it should be stressed to all the departments, this year especially this year.
Yeah.
It, it's going to be incumbent upon them to really examine their departmental budgets and say, where did I not need the money last year and where can I possibly help the town by not adding another dollar to the budget that I absolutely, one hundred percent don't believe I absolutely need? There are places in the budget, and we've seen it before, where they don't spend to the allotted amount. And then in the last month, they'll spend every dime of it. You know how it goes, right? We, we've all been in that before because people are afraid that if I don't spend it all this year, I won't get it next year. This may be the one year that's just the anomaly that we're trying to say, yeah, please don't spend it all if you don't have to and get back to normal the year after.
Yeah. And I had that conversation with the department heads a month ago and they were very cooperative. They said, we get it, we get it. I mean, frankly, to be able to have a level services budget this year, everybody should know those department heads, and I'm sure they do. That's really good news because there's a lot of towns that are cutting budgets and that's the message you're sending out. Cut your budget five percent, ten percent. And don't turn in a budget level services. You get a cut, which means frankly, because eighty percent of your cost is labor, that means layoffs.
Right.
We're not looking at that right now. So that's great news.
Right. And the, the only message I want to send out is everybody, please, in this one year, try and pull the rope in the same direction. Because even one person pulling the rope in the opposite direction could turn the whole apple cart upside down and just could be a disaster. So we don't want that, right? Thank you. I appreciate all your work in this.
Kathy, did you have anything?
Yes, a couple of things. I agree with Selectman O'Neal that the snow and ice fund should be raised again. When I was on the finance board and the finance board has continued the practice, we noted that it had not been increased over at least a twenty to thirty year period. So it's fallen increasingly behind. So to expect them to be able to stay within that budget at today's cost is, is just not reasonable. Only in a winter when there's no snow, which is New England, doesn't happen that often. Also, the reserve fund, I think we found out this year when the unexpected happens, that perhaps a reserve fund that has more than twenty thousand dollars available with a twenty million dollar budget. We might think about increasing the reserve fund. It's usually funded from the overlay anyway, not from the tax rate.
I would certainly concur with you, Kathy. If the reserve fund's only twenty grand, that's not much of a hedge.
It's only twenty thousand. And by that, when we touch it once, it's just about gone.
Yeah, I, I think you're right.
So some measured steps in that. I know last year we, we went back and forth on the street sweeper, so I just wanted to put a pin on that and say, whatever we did this year that saved us a lot of money, can we do it again next year? Right? Okay. And the last thing was just the format of the budget. Everybody's used to it. The town meeting's used to it. I'm used to it. Let's keep the format the same. And I, I always, I like the letter that Denise used. I don't know if you still have access to it. Kind of told people if they had anything above and beyond that they felt they had to bring forward, they had to identify it kind of separately and justify it. So they don't bury it in some line item. Because I certainly would want to hear from departments what's going on, what's going on in their department. And I don't want to give them a message of just level fund or two percent. I think a little more specific, you know, to again, I don't have Denise's letter in front of me, but it was always pretty good about, talked about as always, we're always a frugal town. We always balance right on the penny. And we somehow managed to find just enough to, to get through the town meeting and we expect this year to be similar. So we do expect them to try and stay within the confines of proposition two and a half percent. But that being said, would they please separate and identify anything new or unusual that's in the budget, just so it's brought out and about and we can see what's going on there? But I don't like zero base or, or level services because everybody can interpret that in all different ways and we've never done that this way for several years now. I think everyone's kind of I think everyone's kinda used to this process that we have. The colored tabs, we're used to our colors.
But your format's gonna be identical.
I know, I'm just kidding with you.
Oh, okay.
We are like turning out to the colors.
I don't want you to have any impression, when you get the budget, it's it's gonna be identical.
Yeah.
Well, except the numbers are gonna change.
The numbers will change, yeah, so.
But the format will be very familiar.
And and other than that, I mean, this is great, I know we got the tax rate set today, which is another good step. Um, it would be nice to just see the actuals for FY twenty one in between here, the between the budgeted and the projected. So at some point, maybe in one of our next meetings, we could.
Well, any any actuals would be year to date actuals.
I know, that's, yeah.
Of a particular snapshot in time.
Well, right, that'd be comforting to see that we're actuals to date are tracking along what we expected.
That is the report you're getting every month now. I don't know if you noticed that, but you're getting that by.
I'm talking about on the revenue side.
I would certainly try, but you gotta remember that that report you get and this are very different foot, this took hours and hours and hours to. For so, for instance, the town budget is not a number I can pick off of anything and put in here. I have to do a whole bunch of math on a spreadsheet to get that number in there from all those budgets. But remember, in the town budget.
No, I'm talking about just the top pieces, the top half of this paper, right here. So we got.
Oh, the actual revenues year to date.
Yes, exactly, mhm, yes.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, that's I thought, okay, I'm not talking about everything. Just little little steps so that we.
Yep.
See information and and we're tracking it. That would be amazing. Other than that, I mean, this thing, everything looks good and fingers crossed it's going to uh be a nice year for an outdoor meeting.
Just not today.
Not today.
Ed, did you wanna jump in?
Yeah, I do. Um, Kevin, on the receipts.
Yep.
Uh, under number eleven, page three rentals. Is is that the rental for the cell tower?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's exactly what that is.
Yep, thank you. That that that, yeah, that's it. Oh, no, no, just one more.
Yeah.
One more thing. On, um, you know, you, uh, on the electric company receipts for uh payroll and other paperwork, it's a why don't we do the same thing for the water department?
You do, but the there's two different ways you can do that. You can either take those numbers and you can put them in the water budget in the offset receipt account department's budget, or you can pull them out separately and have it be a transfer. As long as they're accounted for, you're fine. So there's two different ways to do it. The town has been putting those costs right in the water in the sewer budget.
Okay.
Um, but light, because light department budget isn't voted by the town. It's a separate enterprise fund set up under a separate law. We have to separately account for the money that things that we do for them that cost us money, and they have to transfer that over to us in order to that that's that forty grand covers a whole bunch of costs that are buried throughout the budget. So it has to be an external transfer, that's why it appears that way.
All right, thank you.
Jason, anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, that was good, that looks uh.
Great, thank you.
Looks promising, that numbers look better than I think any of us thought earlier this year, so that's good. Uh, so we're gonna move on to Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grant, and hopefully Rebecca can work the Zoom, and I need to move.
Great.
I need to move. Do we need to turn this on too?
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, can you hear me?
We can, give us one second.
Do you want us to hit the light bar off up there?
Thank you.
Is that all set? Should be. Same as last word.
So we just wanted to give a brief update. Um, so the town received a Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grant to explore the parking challenges in this whole square and put together a parking management plan. The consultant that was selected to help us perform these tasks was Stan Tech, and together with the Elm Square Committee, we have been working on a plan that is gonna be presented this evening. Uh, the Elm Square Committee will be providing a follow up report later this spring, just the first piece. Um, and so I'm going to turn it over to Amelia and Jason with Stan Tech, and I would also like to thank them for their efforts, their expertise and their time working on this.
If we can hit the lights?
Yeah, I'll get the lights.
One of those.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Just the one above there.
Hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yep.
I just wanted to really briefly um jump in and say thanks actually to Rebecca. Just so you all know, the the grant that was awarded for the Department of Housing and Community Development was a competitive grant process. Um, and Rebecca wrote a compelling grant to be awarded the monies for the technical services, which are provided for free through a contract that we have with D H C T E for the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative. It's a great program, and we're happy to be a part of the solution. Rebecca's done a great job providing a lot of essential data that helps us be able to move forward and make some good recommendations for you. And of course, um, she helped pull together the folks in the Elm Square Committee, which are excellent to work with. So without any further ado, Amelia is going to share with you our findings. Hopefully it won't take much more than twenty twenty-five minutes or so. Um, if you don't mind holding any questions until the end, we can go back to any slide and answer anything you may have.
Good evening, everyone, can everyone hear me okay?
Not at all.
A little low.
A little low. I'll get a little closer. Um, is that a little bit better?
Uh, that's better, but.
Great. I can't turn it up any louder. So my name is Amelia Casey. Um, as Jason kind of introduced, we will be talking for roughly twenty to thirty minutes, um, leaving around ten minutes versus Q and A. If you're on our findings and our.
You may put a microphone by the speaker to pick it up on the TV.
I know I'm a presenter though, but I just tried to hear my side and said both have the same whole presenting sharing. If that is possible.
Can you turn on the captions, that helps too.
It says that screen sharing's on.
No, it's captions, captions.
Oh, how do I do that?
Hmm.
What do you try to do?
Caption?
In the captions?
Yes, you can see what words she's saying, it sometimes makes it easier.
Right, right now I'm considered just as a participant. I may need to be a host to share.
That's the chat, it's not it. The more? I don't know.
Does that give you anything?
No.
Oh. Yep, mhm, that works. Thank you. All right. Can everybody see my screen? All right. So I'm Amelia Casey, I have been working with Jason and Rebecca in the Elm Square Committee to put together the Elm Square Parking Plan. So tonight, we will again talk for roughly twenty minutes. We'll give you a brief overview of the study goals and the process and what we've been conducting thus far. We will then walk through our existing conditions and findings from what we've seen on the ground and what we've collected from various stakeholders in the town. Um, we will walk through the findings from those sessions and various committee meetings we've attended and participated in, and then the meat of it will focus on the draft strategies. So, uh, really laying out what we've proposed and how this will help improve parking in the community. So pick it off with the study goals. Um, we worked with Rebecca and the Elm Square Committee to really nail down what we wanted uh, this study to do and to achieve. So first and foremost, documenting existing parking supply and demand is something that's really important to most of our studies as you really want to understand what's happening on the ground, what your parking system looks like today, and how it's being used on a daily basis. Um, we then wanted to look at how the parking current parking system works for all users, so for residents, um, town staff, employees, visitors, um, to see if it's easy and how we can improve it uh in the future. Um, we then wanted to look at and recommend um some different uh ways to improve the efficiency um of your current parking management system and supply overall and help you maximize uh demand in the square. And lastly, uh, we always take a look at parking standards and what you have in your current zoning code to really understand how we can use your zoning code um to better utilize parking in the long run. So we began this study in mid to late summer. We have worked with the town and stakeholders through various committee meetings, understanding what's happening, how the parking is used, um, what feedback you've conducted in past efforts. Uh, we then took some time after collecting that qualitative and quantitative uh uh feedback and data to create our management strategies. So we went to the the Elm Square Committee earlier this month um and talked with them about our draft strategy, so they provided some input. They've had a chance to look at uh look at what we've presented and come up with so far. And now we're in this final stage where we are presenting to you, and we're taking everything back and creating that final plan that can be uh implemented and approved and ready for Rebecca to use. So we worked with the town to figure out an appropriate study area that took a look at um key commercial corridors in Elm Square and then also um peripheral town facilities and and parking facilities. So as you can see on the map here, uh, we looked at everything um from uh uh around Elm Park and in the heart of Elm Square, over all the way to the Police Department, um, Town Hall, those larger recreational facilities that take into account those um public or town hall uh parking facilities. When we conduct our parking analyses, we uh take into consideration on and off street parking. Um, so that is all public and private parking, um, customer spaces, um, publicly designated parking. So it's it's really a holistic, comprehensive approach. Um, we usually categorize our regulations as it would be seen on the field or on the ground. So if I, as a visitor to Elm Square, was to come visit um visit Groveland, how would I perceive parking? What signage is there? Um, could I park in the Elm Park, pull in drive in spaces? Could I park across the street? Um, so that's a good way for us to figure out really what's what's happening. Um, so as you can see here, um, ninety-four percent of your parking facilities of your roughly six hundred and thirty spaces are off street, and then only six percent is um of parking spaces are off street. As you can see in the little kind of charts on the bottom left, um, you have officially three hundred and eighty-two public parking spaces. So this includes, as you can see on the map, the blue colors that are officially designated as public parkings. This is the Elm, the Elm Park parking spaces, um, the parking spaces that are off in the recreational facilities, and then you have the restricted parking that includes private parking only for residents, customer only parking designated by signage, um, residential parking lots, uh, those those type of regulations. However, what is typically experienced on the ground is that most people will park in a customer space, and sometimes if it's walkable, they'll hop across the street to drop off something at the post office and also frequent um a restaurant to grab some food. So we categorize this as publicly accessible spaces where, without knowing it, um, you're using one space to access frequent other uses. So we collected parking demand um throughout a typical weekday. This data was actually conducted by the town pre-COVID, so this was collected in the fall of twenty nineteen. So a really great effort put together by Rebecca where she used our typical parking demand collection approach to to collect utilization on the ground and understand what was happening on a typical weekday and a typical weekday. So in the map here on the right, you can see that the cooler colors reflect low utilization and low demand and warming up to those hotter colors, which uh designates that a facility is highly utilized or busy. Um, the green with the eighty to ninety percent is kind of the peak utilization. So if if you were able to go to that parking facility, most of the parking spaces would be full or taken. However, you would still be able to park, there'd be one or two spaces open, so you could still park close to um the use that you would like to frequent. As you can see in the bar chart on the bottom left, utilization overall across a typical weekday from the morning all the way to the evening is relatively low. So at the peak time at six P M. on a on a weekday, it gets to twenty-three percent. This is not extremely rare. Um, in in similar municipalities, we've seen lower utilization rates um across the day below fifty, forty percent. But this is pretty low, um, getting below that thirty percent. On the weekends, Rebecca's team collected data kind of in that morning rush as well as the lunchtime brunch rush. Um, this data reflects is slightly lower utilization, so around twelve percent, as you can see in the map. Um, there are the cooler colors, so a lot of the facilities were not highly utilized. And most of the facilities in Elm Square are relatively vacant on a weekend. We decided to take a few cuts of the data to really look at what was happening in public parking spaces versus these private parking spaces. So even doing this cut right here, it the data doesn't fluctuate too much. Um, the peaks are a little bit different, so public parking has a peak of six P M. um on a typical weekday, and then for private parking, there is a peak during that lunch rush at um around eleven A M. We then decided to look a little bit closer at Elm Square and really understand what was happening in the heart of the square as people who park in the pines recreational facilities are not walking all the way down to Elm Square to frequent the restaurants. It's really parking in right um on Union Street, Main Street, Elm Park. Those are the spaces that are getting utilized the most and that are the most important to Elm Square. So when you take this cut of that, it actually jumps up around ten percent. So you're at that four thirty-four percent mark for the peak utilization across a typical weekday. Um, most of the parking facilities, the off street facilities, as you can see on the zoomed in map, are relatively busy. You're getting into those warmer colors in the Elm Park um spaces and some entree spaces in front of um on South Main Street, and then even at the post office uh lot across the street, across Main Street. Something else that we look at when we conduct these parking studies is multimodal conditions. So for the perspective of a pedestrian, someone who is biking, how is it the experience of visiting Elm Square? Because parking, it's not just about your experience parking, it's about how you can walk to the use across the street, um, how you could bike there, and how safe and walkable is it for you? So we noticed just taking a look on the ground that um there's minimal traffic calming infrastructure around that larger intersection at Main Street. Wayfinding and signage um is not too present, so visitors would potentially be confused about where to go or where to park. Um, and something else that we noticed as well is that there are little to no um walking facilities and accommodations like updated crosswalks, um, and sidewalks that that really creates a walkable experience for pedestrians. So a few key findings from our inventory and utilization analysis um reflected that a lot of the parking facilities, both on and off street, do not have clear regulations or signage, so it was confusing for visitors who are frequenting the square to understand where they can park. Um, however, that being said, some of the regulations and signage that are present in the square are more focused and dedicated to um customer uses or restricted to typical public. So say kind of for this parking space is utilized or reserved for customers only. Um, overall, across a weekday and weekend, the uh parking demand in Elm Square is not necessarily highly utilized. Um, however, this means that parking is relatively available during these peak periods, lunchtime, morning rush, um, evening dinner rush, when when you could accommodate more visitors. And um we, after talking with stakeholders and collecting some of the data, we realized that there's this perception that parking is not necessarily clear and it's not easy to understand where you can park, which for some visitors and residents, this is perceived as having low parking availability in a downtown. So as we mentioned, we talked with Elm Square Committee um through two meetings where we had conversations about what needs and opportunities there are for parking in Elm Square and to understand and collect some feedback on our draft strategies. So it was really helpful for us to understand what was going on and how we can update our recommendations to create something that will really help improve the parking management system in Elm Square. So something we heard overall is that Elm Square needs to be more walkable, um, that some systems that are occurring right now specifically related to informal shared parking. potentially need to be formalized and have structures in place to make it clearer for business owners. It's not easy for those who park and visitors to access the storefronts they would like to frequent. And there's limited opportunities for reuse of these storefronts. And the current parking standards and regulations do not promote infill development. So jumping to the meat of the presentation, our draft strategies. So here's a little overview of what we are proposing for Elm Square parking management strategies. And we'll walk through these in more details. And as Jason mentioned, we can take some time at the end to talk about this and collect some feedback and walk through these strategies. So our first one was to daylight publicly available, publicly available off-street parking spaces with signage and wayfinding. To really improve that customer experience. We also thought there was an opportunity to add some on-street parking in Elm Square along Elm Park. We have a few conceptual designs that talk about this a little bit more. Another goal of this parking study is to help facilitate the creation of a more walkable Elm Square, creating those crosswalks, accessibility features, so that once you leave your car after you've parked, it's easier for you to get around and get back to your car. Something that is really important to Elm Square that we think would drastically improve the system overall is creating a formalized shared parking program. And we have some precedent examples that talk about this and how this is a really great system to help unlock those parking facilities. And lastly, kind of following up on that shared parking program recommendation, is to reconfigure, redesign, and restructure these parking lots to beautify them and make them more appealing to park in. So related to designating these off-street parking facilities with proper and comprehensive signage, these are a few examples of what we've seen in other municipalities that we've worked with across the Commonwealth. The importance of adding proper signage and allowing your visitors to see where they can and cannot park kind of helps to intercept these visitors and bring them to the correct parking facility so they feel like they have somewhere to park instead of circling Elm Square multiple times. So it really helps to direct people to other destinations, not just their parking space. And it helps them, most importantly, get back to their parking space. So we've seen in various towns, Pittsfield and North Adams are really great examples of how they created a comprehensive wayfinding program. And that's actually something that DHCD and the MDI grant has worked with towns on. There's a consultant that DCH works with who specializes in wayfinding plans and help creating a beautiful program and design that is tailored and specific to your town. So we think that's a great way to kind of beautify the experience of accessing and visiting Elm Square. So we've taken a look at a few places where you could put different signage. So there's public parking signs that you could put that just have a big blue key on it to signify this is where you can park, that are publicly designated spaces. There's also wayfinding signage where you can add arrows, walking distance, biking distance, driving distance for those who want to access Town Hall, who want to go to public parks and to community amenities such as the post office. Another important recommendation is to add some on-street parking in Elm Square. We've been able to work with the town and actually through the Mastiot Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program to create some pretty detailed design drawings on how you could add on-street parking in the facilities called out here on Main Street, on Elm Park, and really provide more parking that's right in front of these key uses in Elm Square. So currently in Elm Park, you have the drive-in parking, which is around 12 spaces. Just a rough conceptual design. You could reconfigure, restripe this area to add a couple more spaces and also provide some parking over on the eastern side to provide access to customers directly to the stores they would like to frequent. This also provides some traffic calming infrastructure. So cars traveling through this will drive a little bit slower as they're looking for parking or see that cars are parked on the side. This is something easy you can quickly implement and add more parking in the process. Another area you could add some on-street parking is Main Street in front of Stark and Kronk, as seen in Aerials and on the ground. Clearly, people park there informally now. However, designating this with striping is a great opportunity to designate public parking spaces and make sure that people know where to park adding signage. It's, this is something that we thought you could add on Main Street. Again, it helps with traffic calming and narrows down that roadway a little bit. With this design, you could add approximately four spaces. Another area you could add parking is along Main Street and Route 113. Obviously, this would take some coordination with the district office to understand feasibility of implementing something like this. Again, providing spaces right in front of those uses just through striping, striping and signage. And this would add approximately six spaces right in front of these spaces. Kind of in tandem with everything that we've been proposing thus far is creating a more walkable Elm Square. So through quick and easy installations such as crosswalks, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, lighting, murals, you can make it more easy and accessible for pedestrians and visitors to access Elm Square. We've actually worked with similar towns post this grant to help implement strategies such as this. In the top right, we've actually worked with the city of Methuen to implement some ADA accessibility facilities, crosswalks, signage. And this was something that really boosted the appearance appearance of downtown and the pedestrian facilities that are located in and around commercial corridors and parking facilities. We also, when we created the design for the Mastiot Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, worked with the Penn Tucket Arts Foundation to create some murals and statues, which would enhance the cultural experience of accessing the square. So that's something that we've already done and we've already worked with the foundation and the town on to get something on the ground, especially near the Main Street right here. Beside parking, you could add a mural that would really make it safe and beautify the area when you're walking to access the facilities. Along Route 113, you could also add crosswalks and between parking spaces, some ADA ramps. Again, really boosting and enhancing pedestrian accommodation throughout Elm Square. Through the Mastiot Shared Streets Grants, towns have been able to implement these walkable improvements to help get visitors and residents into their downtown. So we helped the town of Topsfield to implement some traffic calming infrastructure specific to the season, add some outdoor dining. And this really helped improve the look of their downtown. Finally, we propose creating a formalized shared parking program within Elm Square. So we have talked with the town and Elm Square Committee extensively to make sure that this program would be something that both the town and business owners would be open to. So by sharing parking, you can really unlock these restricted parking facilities that during peak and off-peak times are not necessarily available. They're only designated for customer use or restricted access only. So shared parking looks different in every single town and you can interpret it and implement a program however you like. It's really up to the town and the business owners to create a program that would work best for them. However, we've highlighted a few kind of precedent examples on how this would work best. And there's the data to support it as well. So currently in the peak weekday time, around 11:00 AM on a typical weekday, some of these off-street restricted parking lots are never over 60% utilized. So they have the capacity to share parking during off-peak times and to be able to accommodate different uses. We've seen through the various shared parking programs that we've researched and towns that we've worked with that it allows the town to help business owners maintain their parking facilities, provide snow clearance assistance, and be able to implement consolidated signage. Something that we've proposed for other towns and municipalities is keep sample agreements on file. We have plethora of different shared parking agreements that we have and can send to the town so that they have a good database of shared parking agreements that they can show to different business owners. So an example of this is at the post office between 301 and 291 Main Street. So this is where the post office and the other law office is. So as seen on the map here, this facility is not well paved. It's a little unclear who can park there. We know there's issues with accessing the site with the drive-through. And it's a little unclear just through the lack of signage. However, through a shared parking agreement, you first have to work with both of the business owners, obviously, and the town can act as a facilitator. You can then create a public parking lot that has well-paved spaces. Actually, here an increased spaces by around 10 spaces. And you can unlock this parking that is in the heart of Elm Square. And we've worked with both of these landowners to make sure that this is a feasible option for them. This is something they would potentially be open to down the line. That being said, it's not set in stone. This is just something we're proposing and would be a good idea. But it's always great to get the feedback from the business owners as well. So something that we thought is important for Elm Square is really understanding, well, what is the benefit of implementing a program such as this? It creates new parking spaces and facilities for other uses that are close by. And we understand just from talking to the committee and stakeholders that this already happens informally. But you could create a program in place that formalizes this and creates a resource for new business owners and new developments to access this and be open to the idea of shared parking. One way to ensure that all business owners are happily involved in this process is to use the town as a mediator. This is something we've seen. That provides resources for each of the business owners, makes sure all land rights are protected for each of the parties involved, and helps them work through different liability issues and best practice approaches. So the best part about implementing a program like this is that the town can offer in-kind services. And this can really be what the business owners would like or what would be important to Elm Square. So repaving the lots, adding signage, snow clearance during winter storm events, and overall maintaining the facility. So really is a win-win between the town having access to public spaces and the business owners beautifying their lots. So I can go over this in quick detail, but essentially, here are a couple towns throughout Massachusetts that implement shared parking programs. And a takeaway from this is that every town does it a little bit differently. They have the zoning provisions set up in their zoning codes. So there are rules and structures to their programs, so either allowing reduction of parking, having an administration process that the planning board needs to approve it, making sure that all parties involved must sign an agreement. So it's really up to interpretation of the municipality. But there are communities across the Commonwealth that are doing this. And we, in our report, are making sure that we highlight this and provide resources and show that communities are doing this and they're doing it successfully. This is an example of a project that our team worked with in the past, and it's in West Concord, a parking study that was conducted roughly 10 years ago. That was a successful shared parking program. So as seen in the highlighted polygons, all of these lots were broken up and locked before this shared parking program was implemented. And they were only accessible to the uses directly adjacent to them. However, with a shared parking program, all of these uses are available and open to public different uses during off-peak times. So making sure that each use can still access these parking facilities throughout any time of the day. Last recommendation we have ties into reconfiguring and redesigning existing parking lots and spaces. So again, we worked with Methuen to implement some quick and easy designs that helped at crosswalks, repaving spaces in their lots. Again, this really enhanced the appearance of their parking facilities directly adjacent to public parks in their downtown. We know that farmers markets are something that is important in Groveland. So you can work with business owners to open up these lots for uses that are not just for parking, so for community events and farmers markets. An example of this is in the John Val Hair Salon. So again, talking with business owners and making sure they're open and receptive to these ideas. And taking something that currently looks like this, which only has around 21 spaces, and changing it to a design such as this, where you add five spaces, you can use the paved area for farmer's market during the weekends or off-peak times. And in the process, you are able to repave and redesign the parking lot. So I know it was a lot of talking. Hopefully, I kept within the 20 to 30 minutes. But here's an overview again of our draft strategies from here. We're pretty much at the final stages of our plan. We just need to pile the report, finish up the plan, get some sort of feedback and approval from you. And that way, we can wrap it up and make a really strong study for Rebecca to be able to implement and put on the ground and help improve the parking system overall. So now we can have some time, open it up for questions. We can send this presentation to you after so you can look at it a little bit more. We're always open for more feedback. But I think we just want to get some feedback and input from you.
Anybody have any questions? Hold on one second. So Kathy, you have any questions?
None at this time. I think it looks very interesting, very intriguing. I certainly think that the Elm Square, we redid that park. Jennifer Munson headed that up, did a fantastic job. But if you don't live in this town and you're driving in to try and park downtown, I would think it'd be very confusing, you know? You make the turn the wrong way, you're on the one-way. Can't go left, can't go, gotta go right, then where do you go? You go around in a circle for a while. So I'd be interested in just, you know, taking this one step at a time and trying to see if... I like the shared parking lots idea. Signage, I'd like as long as they minimize it because that was one of the things that we removed from Elm Park years ago was that over the years, a bunch of signs kept getting plunked along it, you know? Truck signs, speed signs, everybody put a new sign up. So the whole park was cluttered with signs. But I think that it's correct. We have some new businesses in there and people don't get to see them because you just rush, you know, the traffic is so bad. And the diner hasn't even been open during this time. So when the diner's open, typically, all the parking on the other side for the diner is full. And people are looking for parking. And you wouldn't really know if you haven't lived here for a while where to go hunt for a spot to park to go have some breakfast. I agreed with your idea too on the crosswalks. Personally, it'd be nice to have a safer crosswalk further up from the square, I think. Than having to cross right down by the light at the peak of the square. That's a tough crosswalk.
Well, there's one in front of Jerry's and there's one down close to the...
But there's no light that stops. You wait for people to pause and then you wait again to make sure they're really gonna stop for you. So I agree, you know, it's not walkable. It's not safe for kids biking around now because of the traffic. It'd be great to see it improved.
Questions? No questions, no questions.
Comments, questions?
Comments, the only comment I have is to thank the members of that Elm Square Committee. The tremendous job that Rebecca continues to do for this town is just beyond extraordinary. My thanks to Amelia Casey with Santec for the brilliant presentation here. And that's about it. Carry on and hope that this can conclude. Carry on and hope that this can conclude to everyone's satisfaction, and we can make downtown a much happier and more accessible place for everybody, especially the business owners.
Jason.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Ed.
Just a couple of quick ones. When you did this study, did you take into consideration all-day parking as far as for employees of some of the businesses? And as an example, I noticed in your presentation you were using, for instance, like shared parking at the bank. And I just can't see somebody parking at the bank and walking down to the square to do their laundry at the laundromat, where they need the parking spaces right out front. And the same thing with people going into the sub shop there on the corner. That's a quick in and out. But did you look into how the usages of the all-day parking were done downtown?
Yeah, so, the way that we categorize the inventory, I think I'm understanding correctly, is we look at all parking facilities in regulation. So, be it public parking or those all-day customer use only. So, all of the parking facilities that you saw in the inventory and utilization maps include all of those parking facilities. We like to look at it holistically to understand from a public and private perspective what the demand is. And touching on your question regarding shared parking at facilities that are a little further away, I think that's where the walkability improvements and the on-street parking recommendation are really key. Not necessarily just on the shared parking perspective of being able to open up that T-Bank lot, but being able to create that parking that would be right in front of the laundromat or right in front of Elm Park. And then creating the necessary ADA ramps and crosswalks would make it a lot easier and appealing to be able to walk maybe a little bit further. But it's kind of win-win in your situation because you could potentially implement on-street parking while adding those pedestrian safety accommodations as well.
I'm all set.
Okay, that was a lot of information. I'll be interested to see what the next, Bill?
They will send us this presentation? Imagine it's a PowerPoint presentation?
I have it, Bill.
Oh, I guess they're gonna clean it up, they said, and then send it out to us when it's done?
Perfect.
Great, super, no, that's it?
Thank you.
Is that what's gonna happen? You're gonna clean it up and then send another revision over?
I think our Comcast first.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can send you a compiled PDF.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a lot of information, that was very good, thank you.
Take care.
You too.
You too.
All right, I'm going back to my seat.
Turn off your spotlight on the way over.
Next up, I think we have, we have a couple of things. But let's jump to Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve hours.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the town facilities on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
So, here's the way it works. Christmas is on a Friday, New Year's is on a Friday.
Typically.
Right, so, the bylaw calls for the employees to have the full day off on Christmas and on New Year's, since those are half-days. You take the other half of the day, and that rolls into Thursday afternoon, if you will. Now, for Christmas, so for New Year's, the closing time would be Thursday at noon. That would be New Year's Eve, okay? So, they're off the half-day Friday, and they're off half-day Thursday. That's the whole day that they're supposed to get. On Christmas, the employees get the half-day before Christmas and Christmas Day. So, you take that one day, you give them the half-day on Thursday, and then the Christmas Eve, you give them the half-day. So, they actually, when the employees go home this Wednesday night, they're off Thursday, Friday. Everybody follow me how that works? Okay.
I like that. I think considering the year that most of these people have been through, this is the least we can do. So, I'll amend my motion to that the town offices be closed all-day Thursday on the December 23rd and all-day Thursday on December 29th.
24th is Thursday, isn't it?
24th is Thursday, I'm sorry.
24th is Thursday.
Correct.
And the, New Year's Eve Thursday would be 30th?
31st.
31.
31 days in December.
30, yeah, yeah.
31.
Well, you know what? That's very generous, and I know the employees would be very appreciative.
So, we have a motion, is there a second? Second, all right. So, one more time? Do we have the dates right and the days right?
That we close town offices completely on Christmas Eve, which would be December 24th, and New Year's Eve, which would be December 31st.
And that was the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Definitely worth it. And then let's, because you gotta leave soon, right, Kevin?
No, actually, I'm okay. I worked that out and made a phone call and all set, thank you.
Let's go back to clarification of town hall accessing keys. Because I think there's perhaps more people that have keys than need to have keys.
Can I tell you, Mike, what I think the board's policy is? And then if that's correct, you guys just tell me that's correct.
You'd be enlightening me because I didn't even know if we have a policy on it, so.
Well, here's what I was told, what people in the building think you have for policy.
Okay.
Is that the only people with keys are employees working in the building, who've got to get in there, obviously, police chief, fire chief for emergency access, an extra key at the police station dispatch desk so that any volunteer chairman, committee people who have to get in there at night to open the building for meetings can come get the key.
Sign it out, use it, sign it back.
But there's absolute accountability of who's got it and why.
Right.
And that's it. That's what I've been told is your policy.
That seems legitimate. Well, yeah, Steve has a key, right?
Right, he's one of the people that get in the building.
All right, so that's what the policy is supposed to be, or the understanding of what the policy is. What's the reality of it?
So, the reality is pretty much that, pretty close. We've been trying to inventory the door key. The door key is a non-reproducible key. It's a so-called signature key. Denise had that, I've gotta flip that over to me at some point. I haven't done it yet because we're not making any keys right now. But next time we're gonna make a key, we'll do that. We've got, I think, 20 keys we've been able to identify, 30?
Oh, 30 keys have been made. I can identify 25.
So, we've got a few missing. We don't know who's got them. That's a little bit of a problem. But on the other hand, I will tell you honestly, I've never been to a town yet. That wasn't the case. Because what happens over time is somebody says, oh, I gotta get a key. And somebody says, okay, here you go. And, you know, so that's now ordinarily, you know, no big deal. In a time of COVID, it becomes a different thing because the concern isn't so much for the physical integrity of the building. That's one concern. The other concern is people coming into the building when the board's policy is very clear, a building is closed.
Right.
Except by appointment only and to people who have a legitimate reason to be in there. So, we did have an incident a couple of weeks ago when somebody with a key, non-employee, brought someone in, and it created quite a stir. I wasn't in the building, I was home, but I got calls because the employees are relying on the enforcement of the board's policy, which is strangers don't come in the building. So, there's an extenuating reason why that person has a key right now, and that'll continue for a couple of weeks, consistent with the board's policy. And as soon as that's resolved, i.e. there's an employee appointed, then that key will go to the employee and come away from the volunteer. So, that'll take care of itself. Other than that, we don't think there's any violations of your policy. We think it's actually being pretty much respected. So, I think we're okay as long as I've got an understanding of what you want.
Well, I want the policy to be followed. Obviously, the health and well-being of the people who are there working for the town is paramount. And we can't just have people going in at random, right? Because that's part of the reason why it's closed, as you said. But you said there was 30 keys made.
Yes.
25 you can identify.
I'm waiting on three, but I know they have keys. I just don't know their number.
Yeah, so there's two or three that.
So, I'm missing, I'm missing five. I don't, I don't believe the board has.
I don't have a key. Does anybody here have a key?
Just leave it at this. If any of you have a key, you don't have to tell us now. Just call Catherine tomorrow, let her know, there's a number right on it.
Put it under the mark.
And tell her what the number is. I mean, the board members have keys. Obviously, I don't have any objection to that, nobody does. We just need to know. And other than that, other than the board, and actually, you're not meeting in the building until we get that squared away.
Right.
So, usually, the tradition has been, in my experience, the chairman of the board will have a key because sometimes you open the building when other people aren't around for the meeting.
I don't want it.
But if you don't even want that, then we're gonna, I told Catherine, ask everybody, as they're coming in out of the building, do you have a key?
Yeah.
And slowly, maybe over time, we'll figure out what those other five are.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to identify the missing five and kind of get a handle on that.
I put some feelers out now, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we don't have to spend a lot of time on that now. Just if we can keep an eye on where we might be able to find those other five. And if people have them that really shouldn't have them, if you can just turn them in, that would be helpful. Because I don't have a key, I don't want a key. I don't need a key. If I need to get in there for whatever reason, I call Catherine or I go to the police station and I check it out. So, that's a very rare instance for me, so I don't know that anyone.
Okay, well, if I find any situations, I'll let the board know. But right now, except for that one situation, which we'll resolve in a few weeks, we're fine.
All right, so, moving on to board of selectmen liaisons to town.
I just had one question on this. On the topic of access to the town hall. I mean, we've closed it to the public. We voted that the employees are all to wear masks when they're in any close contact. I would not expect people to have to have meetings in the town hall building. I expect people to hold meetings through their computer devices right now because of the surge. At work, at school, we don't get together for meetings. We meet on Google. You guys have Zoom. You could do the FaceTime chats too, right through the computer, and not have contact because we have so many one-person offices. And I don't think we can afford to lose even two employees. Because even if they could work somewhat remotely, I know there's records in the building that we're gonna need to have access to. And we just, we can't afford to have these vital people quarantined at home.
We are doing that. And again, and a lot of this is, what's being transmitted to me is what the board's policy was and/or Denise's policy. So, the policy right now is people are in the building unless they have a need to work at home, i.e. childcare issues because the kid's being homeschooled, or they've got a level of concern because, you know, some people have comorbidities. They have particularly elevated reasons for concern. Generally speaking, most of the employees are working physically in the building at least three or four days a week and working, some working remotely.
Right, what I was getting to is the issue of meetings. Like, when people need to meet, no more meetings. Do it digitally, on the computer.
The board of health does meet in there.
Well, they're doing some Zoom too, but I'm saying within our town employee base. If you need to talk to the accountant.
There's no meetings in there.
If you, well, I heard there was a department meeting. So, I'm just saying, because of the surge, if you need to meet with somebody, do it digitally through your computer. Just because the virus is so high right now, it's a bad situation.
We have department head meetings on the bay apparatus floor in here.
Just do it on the digital, just do it on the computer. It's much safer. It protects everybody. It's the best thing to do right now. It really is.
If the board so votes, I will certainly comply with that. But I do not recommend it because, you know, again, if the employee feels that they are uncomfortable and some of the employees don't come to the meeting, we put up a computer and they participate by Zoom. But I leave that up to the individual employee. But if the board wants to say no meetings of the employees.
In person, correct.
Then I'll, and I will enforce that policy. However, there are meetings going on all day long in the building. With my, I had five people in my office today. I mean, three, I mean, I can't function without, I can't do that by Zoom.
Well, actually, you can. I mean, it's not, we do it all day long. I mean, just Google meet, digital meet, face meet. And just, you know, again, if, there's a lot of virus up right now. It's not like this summer.
If the board wants to pass a motion and say that you only want, you do not want any employee meetings, then I will respect that and enforce it. But I strongly urge against it.
Well, I'll move that we go to digital meetings until the numbers are not as high in Groveland. I feel that our workforce is slim, and I don't want to see offices closed down due to quarantine and illness.
That's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yes, I would have to agree with Kevin. I just don't think it's very practical. You've got all the people in the office, everybody follows the mask protocol, and you're gonna have conversations, and you're gonna have groups of people together.
And as Kevin said, they don't have to show up to that meeting if they want to.
Right, if they feel uncomfortable. I know because I believe Allen doesn't go to a lot of the meetings because of that reason. Lots of department heads, and it actually varies week to week. Because of family situations, we'll ask, you know, we'll say, I'm zooming in. And it's not, I don't make it a permission thing. I just tell them, whatever you tell me, that's what you're doing. Because it's personal, and I don't want to be telling people they can't Zoom in if they want to. So, we leave it up to them. I'll agree with Kevin. It's working. They all understand it. Leave it alone, it's not broke. Leave it alone.
It's just a pandemic.
I can't support the motion.
Bill?
I certainly understand where Selectwoman Catherine Ellis is coming from. It's uncertain times. But I just think this is a solution in search of a problem right now, so.
How about an amendment that we encourage digital meetings?
Sure.
And that you encourage them as well, encourage people to go digital.
I think we're just trying to find a way to make the fit. He obviously already said that, you know, it's not mandatory to go to these meetings in person. It's a Zoom if you have to, if there's extenuating circumstances. You don't even have to really define it, just say, I'm not gonna go. So, there's not a lot that needs to be done here.
Let's move the vote then.
Yep, okay.
All right, so.
You can vote on it.
Yep.
Oh, geez, all right, all those in favor?
Me.
All those opposed? Does not pass. All right, moving on to liaisons to town hall, department heads. So, I gathered the information from everybody, and we have a couple of overlaps. So, right now, I have Kathy at library and the health department. I have Ed for library, CPA, maybe a couple others. Jason for planning board, ZBA, assessors and conservation. Bill for accounting, finance, water, sewer, and council on aging. So, we have a couple overlap with highway, where Bill and Ed both requested that. Fire department, where myself and Ed both requested that. And then library, I'm sorry, with Kathy and Ed, who both requested that too. So, I don't know if anybody has a preference to what they want. Right now, I only have police. So, Ed, do you mind giving up library to give to Kathy since you have a couple other things already on there? And I'll let fire department stay with you?
All right, I can do that.
Okay, so Kathy will stay for library and health department. Ed will have highway, CPA, well, maybe highway, CPA and fire department. I think Jason's okay. And then Bill, the only other thing that we have that's overlapping for you is highway with Ed. But you have accounting, finance, water, sewer, and council on aging.
Right, and the only reason I requested highway is because I feel it would be easier for me to coordinate with the scheduling of the fields, their use with the highway department and make sure that the fields are in proper condition before those fields are used just so that it is. Just so that i- i- it's, it just feels more efficient to have that in one, in spot. Um, but I'd be willing to give up, you know, Water or Sewer, uh, as an even trade, so that nobody's.
It's like, let's make a deal.
No one person is just overwhelmed with, with, with too many, you know what I mean?
Ed, what do you think?
Uh, well, I've, I've been with that since, uh, since we started that, when I first got elected. Uh, and, um, I'd, I'd like to continue.
Okay, well, Bill, I don't know what you want. I mean, all I have right now under me is Police, so I can certainly take some others. But, um, right now, I mean, Highway is the only one that's overlapping between you guys. I mean, I could take Highway, but.
I don't know. I, 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 I just made my argument why I feel it'd be easier for one person that's, uh, up to, not up to me. I'm not, I'm not king.
Neither am I. Well, if that's an overlap and both have reasons for wanting to keep it, um, and that's the only one that's of issue, then I'll take it until somebody requests it otherwise.
Great choice, King Solomon.
Could I request the Housing Authority, since I did some work on them, or do you want it?
I'll take whatever you guys want me to take, but if you want housing, you can take housing.
Yeah, I don't have that much. I could take that for you.
Okay.
That's good. Then I have three, right?
Library, Health Department, Housing.
That's perfect.
Okay. All right, so moving on to increase hours for Administrative Coordinator. So, this did not make the discussion the last two meetings, because we ran over. But Kevin, you have some strong feelings as to why Catherine needs more hours. And I think several of us have strong feelings as to why she might not, um, and why she might. I mean, I have my own thoughts on it, but I'll let you go first, and then we'll kinda talk about it from there.
Well, I've, I've given the board a memo on it. I don't wanna belabor it, 'cause, you know, there's no point to that. I just add one, one fact to that, 'cause it wasn't in the memo. I have found it necessary. I've noticed that my hours have slowly ramped up as I've become more familiar with what's going on. And I think I had a few misfires at the beginning, frankly, trying to learn what it is you wanted me to do. But I think I've pretty well figured it out now and kinda hit my stride in terms of getting the things done that you specifically want done. And I think you're gonna continue to see some very steady progress in that regard. I have noticed that in order to get it done, there are weeks when I just have to put in more time. I, I don't mind doing that. I told you I would do it, and I don't mind it. Um, it's, it's, it has gotten pretty extensive the last few weeks, and I started sending you a spreadsheet so you can see what's going on and why that's happening, so that, um, it's just a busy time of year.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, you know, if you're gonna get this work done, we gotta get it done, and it requires time. Catherine is my, is my right hand. Um, what allows me to get that work done for you is the fact that I don't have to do things that I can ask Catherine to do. Set up meetings, go find me this document, go find me that document, answer my phone. I remember the phone is ringing and messages are appearing on that phone all the time, and I'm not in the building to answer it, so she's gotta answer it, take the messages. Call me. Ditto for emails. I've now got my emails being forwarded to my Comcast account at home and to my phone. That's the good news. The bad news is, um, I'm getting about three hundred emails a day. And every, I gotta go through them, because buried in, most of them are junk, to be honest with you, and I'm slowly starting to block some of them. But a lot of them, you know, somewhere in there, there's ones that gotta get answered, so I gotta do it, so Catherine's helping screen. So what it's all adding up to is for me to be able to get the work done that you need done, and be able to spend those hours. She really, that extra time is really helping me get, make it possible, frankly. So, again, I understand there's, there's some resistance from the board. I respect that. And I certainly understand. You got a budget, you wanna, you wanna do what the budget says, 'cause that's what the people approved. But in this case, I think there's justification to increase the hours. I will be giving you my best shot, but it isn't gonna be for another three weeks or so. You know, to give you an analysis, a proper analysis, supporting what the hours should be. But right now, I gotta devote time to other things. Um, the budget, the capital budget, getting things running from, you know, the Treasurer's Office and personnel losses. So, she's really basically keeping my head above water, so I can get all this other stuff done. It costs the six hours is a hundred and fourteen dollars a week. That hundred and fourteen dollars a week that you would pay Catherine to get that work done I need done is leveraging me doing, at my rate, a lot more work for you. So, think of it as you're getting five, six, seven hundred dollars of free work a week. It's costing you a hundred and fourteen if you give me those hours. So, I think it's a good investment. I think it makes good sense. But I also respect the fact that if the board says no, then, then no is no. Um, so I get it. But I hope the board would give me these extra hours, 'cause it really is making a difference, um, to my ability to give you what I'm doing. And I don't see any, I don't see that changing in terms of the time I'm giving you for a while. I mean, I think it'll settle down eventually, you know. But it's gonna be going on like this probably for a good another month or two, where I'm gonna have to put in extra time for you. So, that's all I wanted to say, Mike, and thank you.
Anybody have any comments?
Okay, I'll start.
I mean, I can go, but I don't wanna talk.
So I guess some of my problem is with the math. So, early on, we all said Denise puts in a lot of hours, more than forty, right? And I think we all came to a consensus that the number was sixty. We all agree with sixty? Sixty's a good number? So, I have you for nineteen. I have Catherine for nineteen. Now, based on my notes from eight twenty-seven, I take pretty good notes. And contemporary notes, uh, in most cases are remissible in a court of law, so I, I don't think there's gonna be any debate here on what the minute said. Back in that meeting, we, uh, we had an epiphany. We realized that the interim Finance Director that we thought we had hired wasn't gonna work out. So at that point, we started splitting up. We took that deck of cards, that imaginary deck of cards, and started shuffling them out. So what I have here is, we shuffled out approximately ten hours to Caitlin. We approximately ten hours to Ellen. We've subsequently given Sam about ten. So now I have ten, twenty, thirty, forty. I have sixty-eight hours so far with those five. Which is above and beyond the, the, the sixty that we all agreed kinda Denise was working. Everybody else has already had their, their own hours. Now, another thing I found in my notes is, back in, uh, August twenty-seventh, the meeting, Catherine was currently working twelve hours per week. At that point, we raised them to seventeen hours a week. We subsequently, subsequently raised them again to nineteen hours a week. My question is, how many hours does it take to get a sixty-hour-a-week job done? When I'm already up to sixty-eight, and if I were to look at your, um, email from today, uh, that's another, I'll be generous, and I'll say we're gonna add another fifteen. So sixty-eight, fifteen, three. I'm up to eighty-three man-hours now for a job that once took, and everyone is in agreement, sixty hours. So my question is, where did my math go wrong?
Twenty of those hours, which is the, uh, ten hours for Caitlin, are now gone, 'cause she has left as of.
She's been replaced. We have somebody coming on replacing her, right?
I, I'll get into that, but yes, I'm hoping to. But those ten hours are gone, irrespective of what this new person, interim person does. 'Cause they're not, they're not coming on forty plus ten hours.
And those would be highly specialized hours, not easily transferable to Catherine, would you agree?
Okay. Correct, yeah. It's gonna be pure, get us through the next few weeks while we go through the recruitment process. And of course, Ellen's, um, extra hours end, um, next week. So, January one, so twenty of those hours, um, end.
Get another specialized function.
Correct.
Not easily transferable to Catherine.
Correct. Um, and the, the ten hours from the Building Inspector that we attributed to extra work, um, that was parceled out that was formally done by Finance Director. I would say frankly, that was pretty soft hours comparatively, because as I looked at that work, and I said, okay, I wouldn't want to represent you. That represented ten hours. I really wouldn't wanna do that, 'cause I don't think it does. I think what we were doing is we were coming up with a acceptable way to observe the fine point of the law and provide a salary increase, but to do it in a legal way.
Granted, I'll give you five hours back. I'm at seventy-eight now.
Okay, so I think if you, what you're left with at this point, and, and I don't honestly know if the Finance Director works sixty hours or fifty-five. I, I don't know. But using that math, we're probably back somewhere, as of January one, we're probably back somewhere to forty. Twenty from Catherine, twenty from me. Um, I'm giving you a lot more than that. I can't tell you what my predecessor did in those hours. I don't know. What I do know is that I'm not dealing with a normal situation because of staff losses. I'm simultaneously now trying to do a forty-hour-a-week job that the Assistant Treasurer Collector did and is now not doing, and has not been doing for several weeks now. She did it part-time, gave us some hours, but nowhere near the forty or thirty-seven, whatever it was. So for the last two weeks, I've been trying to personally do what used to get done in eighty hours? I don't know how many hours it was, um, but two full-time people. I mean, when I tell you Catherine is keeping my head above water, I'm not exaggerating, because without the forty-hour-a-week Assistant Treasurer and trying to do the Finance Director's fifty, sixty-hour-a-week job, I'm struggling. And that's, that spreadsheet that you see, that the hours I gave you last week is a representation of how, you know, how much I'm struggling.
Right, and I guess that's, that's, that goes to my other point. I know during the interview, you looked at the town, you looked at the finances. Kinda small, kinda easy, and you almost made light of it that, heck, this is, I can do this. Standing on my head with my eyes closed, spinning like a top, in three days, tops. Tops, three days. So what has so dramatically changed since that day in October to this day in December? Where we're looking at in, in excess of twenty hours, man-hours, to complete the job, the task that used to be completed in sixty plus your, the, the rest of your staff. This is where I have a major disconnect. I'm a math guy.
Two weeks ago, two weeks ago, you lost a forty-hour employee. Two weeks ago. Now, that employee was able to give us back a few hours. I think thirteen the week before, and somewhere around that, probably last week. That's a pretty dramatic change, and for me.
That just recently happened.
Two weeks ago that happened.
Two weeks ago. That, that's pretty recent, right? But this is, what you're telling me is this is, this is a systemic problem from day one.
Two weeks ago is when I made the request for the extra hours. Those events were synonymous. They weren't separate. The triggering event that caused me to send you, make that request was because I could see this was going to go downhill quickly without some extra help somewhere. And I was able to get it in the form of some extra hours from the employee who was leaving and a little bit of extra time for Kate, uh, for Catherine, although last week, I think we capped it at nineteen, and we just said, that's that.
And Caitlin's replacement starts.
As what?
Caitlin's replacement begins.
Was in today. We did basically a day-long interview with all of the staff. It was kind of a simultaneous interview. Him looking at what needs to be done and determining, does he want to do that? And the staff sizing up his ability to do it, um, and determining, you know, um, is this a person that we think can do what we need? Again, it's all temporary. Four weeks, five weeks, six weeks, whatever it is. So we haven't had any effective work out of that person yet. I mean, what they did today was basically get familiar with the situation. They didn't give us any work. Um, assuming that person starts tomorrow and is available a couple days a week, we'll get back some of those forty hours we've lost. Not all, but we'll get back some of it. I mean, the reality is, if I have to go up the hall and do the day-to-day treasuring function, which is not what you hired me for. I made it very clear when you interviewed me that I'm, you know, have not functioned as a treasurer in a long time. I can do it and have been doing aspects of it. But if I have to, this is a practical reality. If I have to go up the hall and become the day-to-day treasurer, I cannot simultaneously do those seven or eight things you want done. It's just not possible. I mean, that trade, that job's a forty-hour-plus-week job. So, um, we've got a, I would say, a bit of a crisis going on right now. I'm managing it. And I get wonderful staff that's stepping up, and they're doing a great job. But Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, I talked to two of the people that are affected, and they both told me they can't continue at this pace. They're doing a lot of extra hours. Sunday morning, one of those employees called me. I'm on the computer working for you. She's on the computer working for you. And she frankly said, I can't keep doing this. And I said, I get it. I get it. Help's coming. So we've got, we definitely have a bit of an issue right now with respect to, um, the financial functions. There's no doubt about it. I think it's manageable. I'm not gonna tell you five hours from Catherine is gonna fix the problem. It's not. But it gives me the ability to do more of that, what you want done, and less of doing the things that Catherine is doing for me. That's enabling me to do that other stuff. It's a help, but it's not a, it's not a cure. When I do my report, the next item, I'm gonna tell you what it is I'm doing to try to really make the financial side of it work. So I don't know if that answered the question, Bill. I guess I'm trying my best to answer it for you.
I, 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 I guess, in my mind, I still have just this huge disconnect between the number of man-hours it's taking to get the job done previously, the number of man-hours that are requested now requesting to get the same job done today. It just seems, it's a bridge too far for me to leap over, is what I'm saying. I, I, I just can't understand that twenty-hour difference. That's, uh, that's one, it, it's the half a person.
I think one of the things the board needs to consider is, if it's the case, and I don't know. But if it's the case that the previous Finance Director, at sixty dollars an hour, was doing work that Catherine is now doing at nineteen dollars an hour, if that's thought to be a good economy, that is a false economy. Because you don't pay sixty dollars an hour for work that could be done for nineteen dollars an hour. That's just, that's just, makes no sense.
And I, I don't think anybody would disagree with you, but I don't think Denise took on anything that she felt was below her level or just wasn't, you know, dignified enough to, to, to be done. I don't know how she did it.
Yeah.
I wasn't here. I didn't watch any detail. All I know is that at the end of the day, KP, it all got done.
Yeah.
It all got done exceptionally well. It all got done on time.
Yes.
It all got done on budget.
Yeah.
So whether she used, uh, hard work or pixie dust, I don't know. But all I know is, at the end of the day, it all got done in those hours.
Well, here's what I can tell you. Catherine is doing work that used to be done, presumably, by another person.
That's right, and that's why on, on, the twenty-seventh of August, we increased the hours from twelve to seventeen, and then subsequently increased them again.
And I think you just challenged my assertion, which was previously, that person was the Finance Director, who was paid sixty dollars an hour. So if you now have somebody doing work at nineteen dollars an hour, and that work was formally done by somebody at sixty, you have realized a significant financial gain in that trade. I would submit to you. I would submit to you that the investment that you made in Administrative Coordinator is a wise decision. What I don't know, we yet know, because one of the first things I asked Catherine for is, when your position was established, tell me about the genesis of it, did somebody analyze your duties and figure, you know, this is how many hours we need? And she said, no, basically, and she told me the whole story. And then I checked with the Chairman of the Finance Committee, he told me the whole story. And I said, well, so basically, there was a realization that with the previous Finance Director gone, that, and nobody hired full-time yet, in an unsuccessful negotiation with one or two interims, whatever it was, there was a presumption, there was a certain amount of work had to get done, and Administrative Coordinator position was the answer, but nobody really knew how many hours it would require, it just wasn't known. So we sort of took a shot at it. What I think I'm finding is that the number of hours that were established just aren't adequate, and I think the evidence of that frankly, is if you call around to all the depart, all the town halls around us, you will not find one that does not have a full-time position like that, just a risen one, there is not a town. I've already done that, obviously. And that's all part of my analysis that I want to give to you in three, you know, three weeks or so, when I tell you what I think the proper staffing is, because that will reflect in the budget that we're doing for next year. I can't tell you that yet because I just haven't had time to finish it. What I can tell you is that every week when Catherine gets to nineteen hours, it's usually occurring, I mean, Mike, we've been talking to you about this. It usually hits around Wednesday and we haven't even set the agenda yet and we haven't done a lot of things that still have to get done. And so I'm making all these kind of weird, artificial constraints and saying to Catherine, well, ah, my goodness, I can't work an extra hour, get the agenda out. I mean, it's just, it's getting, it's, it's honestly, folks, it's to the point of just pure silliness at this point, because I'm saying things to her like, well, okay, you're already at nineteen, or you're at seventeen point five, we still gotta get the agenda out, you know, it's just, it's just not working. So I grabbed six to make it twenty-five. It's not based on any scientific, proper analysis, I just kinda grabbed it and said, well, twenty-five is better than nineteen, until I can do a proper analysis for you. That's my best shot.
I'm off set for now.
Kathy, you're up.
Okay, I have like five bullet points, I'm gonna make it quick because this meeting cannot go on much longer, I've been on my feet all day, so.
We all have full-time jobs all day.
I know, but so, so, I mean, but no.
Stuff that needs to be, to be ironed out here at the meeting.
We've talked about this a lot, we ne, I, I don't ever remember this board asking the Financial Director to do a study of staffing. They never voted such a thing. Second thing, the town meeting never voted this position, and I originally, when Denise brought up the need to have some kind of a patch coordinator position, you recall, I had some misgivings about it because town meeting never approved this position. So we transferred from Reserve Fund initially, and I said, okay, makes sense. Third thing, we had a, a transition plan that involved Denise coming here, I said at least two Thursdays, you guys wanted four, I mean Fridays, in November, and that would have definitely smoothed this transition enormously, you know, because then you'd know where the software is, you'd know where everything is, the code read. What I see right now, honestly, from my perspective, is a disarray, when Denise wanted to reach me, she emailed me. When the Finance Director wants to reach me, emailed Catherine, Catherine emailed me, I emailed Catherine, she emailed. This position, my understanding from Denise was is to ease our transition, our transition, not a personal assistant to the Financial Director. And I also thought that we were gonna post and hire a full-time Treasurer Collector because no matter what happens, once we move out beyond interim, we need a full-time Treasurer Collector, not two days a week. So that, you keep doing this two-day-a-week thing and we keep hiring more clerical help and the work just piles up and it doesn't get done right. I don't want to find that out at the end of this year, when we finally get to see what the actuals are. So I want a full-time Treasurer Collector hired, someone that we're gonna live with, not a patch. Okay? And I think we went on an interim Financial Director for nineteen hours, if we feel that's not working out, we can get the search committee together again and go out for a Finance Director again, we said that after the new year, we could do, look again if we had to, but at this point, I can't see adding more hours to a position because it's not just hours, it's benefits too, and a town meeting never voted on this, never voted on it. It's all coming out of places that, that, you know, it's not supposed to, and we already know that other people needed more hours this year, we tried to make that right, we did the best we could, we can't keep doing this outside of town meetings. This is not okay. We go to town meeting, they set the budget, we have unusual circumstances, but I'm now hearing we're gonna hire a Treasurer Collector for what, two days a week or something? I mean, that's ridiculous, that's a full-time job.
Right, but it's not that you can pull someone out of thin air tomorrow.
No, but I mean, we need to post it, I mean, if you wanna have a patch person, but is it posted, are we getting a search committee, are we getting anything done on it? That's an important position, whether we go to a town administrator or not, we need that Treasurer Collector. And if, if our interim Finance Director's not comfortable with those duties, because that's part of your job, when we made the Finance Director, the primary function was Finance Director slash Treasurer. And so we need to get this Collector position filled, full-time, and then we don't need any part-time.
Jason, you were next.
Yeah, the only thing I would say with, with Bill's math, even though Denise was capable of getting that job done at sixty hours, you rolled in two jobs into her job to get it done, and the Administrative Coordinator and Personnel was that other job. And that was voted on by the town. And so once you lost her, you lost not just the one job, you lost both jobs. Theoretically, that's gonna be a total of eighty hours. Because now you're gonna have somebody new taking that position on. You're not gonna have somebody that's been seasoned within the town, that's doing that job, that understands how and can do it as efficiently right off the bat. They gotta get in, they gotta get their work done, and I know from changing jobs, so you know from changing jobs, you don't hit your feet running, it takes a long time to get situated and set in what's going on. So I, I think the hours are necessary. I think it's, I think it's appropriate.
Ed?
Yes. Caitlin is, in her job description, was to work hand-in-hand with the Finance Director that we approved. And along with duties with the Board of Selectmen, she was supposed to be assisting the Finance Director, interim Finance Director.
Excuse me, do you mean Catherine?
I'm speaking.
I know, I just wanna know who we're speaking about, that's all.
I have the floor, Kathy, I have the floor.
Okay.
And so the Administrative Coordinator was working for the Board of Selectmen, assisting the Finance Director. We certainly wouldn't expect to be paying a Finance Director, the, the wage that he's getting, to be doing clerical work, that's, that's not what he should be doing. And he feels that he needs that, based upon the duties that he's asked her to do, to assist him, the hours aren't enough. So we increased it once, and again, we need to increase it, increase it again, so that she can do, she can do the job the way it's supposed to be done. And Jason is correct. Originally, it was a full-time Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen and a full-time Finance Director. And those were combined into one position. And they should've, the Selectmen need an Administrative Assistant, every other city and town has an Administrative Assistant for their governing body, the, the Selectmen or in the case of a, of a city, a mayor, a city council. It's, it's a reasonable request, that was one of the charges that we asked him to do, was to see how many hours a week some of these employees should be working. And I, I, I support the request for increased hours for the Administrative Coordinator.
Alseth?
Yeah.
So a couple of quick points from me, I'm concerned that this pushes us into benefit eligibility, which is an added cost. I'm also in line with Kathy as far as what's been approved at town meeting, because this seems like it's more of a, and I understand why, ad hoc, right? I mean, because this whole second half of the year has just kinda been like, what do we do to keep the lights on? I'm not sure what the background was given to Kevin from the Finance Board or anybody else, but what I thought, and I had written some stuff down, that when Catherine was hired, she was hired to assist Denise and the Board of Selectmen, and she was supposed to take care of the Selectmen's agenda and coordinate the work that Denise was then to catch up on for Fridays. So those Fridays that she was giving us, the work Catherine was doing over the week was to coordinate that work, gather it all together, present it to Denise on Friday for things that she needed to get through, whether that took her three hours or eight hours, that was depending on the Friday. And I think that's why it was a temporary hire. And it was called Administrative Coordinator in a temporary position, and then it would be reevaluated about this time. What I think has happened is Catherine has become a catch-all for almost everything, right? So everything's getting piled on top of her of, give it to Catherine, Catherine can do it, give it to Catherine, and before you know it, she's over the nineteen hours by, you know, three o'clock Wednesday every week. So, I mean, I understand the situation, it's something that we have to juggle, there's a lot of things that are playing into it and we're all just trying to do our best with adjusting as things come at us. But I, I gotta think that there's a better way to coordinate your time on what you're supposed to be giving us Monday and Wednesdays, I think, for nineteen hours or whatever the time is. And then her nineteen hours, I feel like those hours are overlapping with your hours. So from my perspective, if we adjust the focus on things, you're on, call it duty Monday, she's on duty Tuesday, maybe there's a couple hours overlap where you guys kinda coordinate things. Wednesday, you're on duty, she's on duty Thursday, maybe there's a couple hours that coordinate things here and there, but I, I gotta think that the, the focus on the hours would help that assessment on who's doing what and not just a catch-all for everything. Maybe I'm wrong and I don't see it because I'm not at town hall every day, right? I have another full-time job. But it seems like there could be, maybe it's both, maybe it's both a refocusing on activities and what should be laid out as far as who's doing what on what day, and maybe it is an increase in hours, but we gotta look at what the benefits eligibility, eligibility looks like when we push it over twenty hours. And then what, you know, we can't keep giving a catch-all to Catherine to, to do everything. And I understand the hours thing, right? I understand Bill's hours thing, I understand Jason and Ed's hour thing, so we're all just trying to get to the best kind of scenario that we can get by with, and I don't have all the answers to it.
Well, you, you have accurately identified what the position has grown into, because I don't, I think it started as a fairly focused position in terms of what it would do, and I think slowly over time, largely because I'm not here full-time, it's, it's grown into the person that everybody goes to who has any kind of an issue requiring the Board's attention or my attention. So she is getting a lot of requests that frankly, I don't think any, any of us would have anticipated, the legitimate requests, you know, people looking for selling a truck to cemetery department and looking for the title, and then, you know, needing to know, how do I insure this truck? And then she calls me at home and says, how do we insure a truck? And I said, we're gonna call so-and-so and fill out the form. I don't think, if you look at her job description for the Administrative Coordinator, you won't find anything in there about insurance and vehicle registrations and stuff, and that's just one example, but that stuff goes on all day long. So you're right, Mike, she's becoming the go-to person when I'm not in the building. When I'm in the building, I'm the go-to person, which is fine. Funny, because I made a remark the other day, I could be more productive by not coming in the building. In terms of the six or seven things you want me doing, I could be much more productive hiding at home. And in fact, that's what I did last week, I stayed at home, got the recap done, and a couple of marathon days, but we got it done. So I think that's very much part of it, because there's a bit of a vacuum without a full-time Finance Director, but it might've been a full-time plus Finance Director. So there's a bit of a vacuum, people need things, so they're coming of necessity to Catherine, because there is no one else that knows where these things are and how to do them. So that is certainly part of the problem, there's no doubt about it. We are trying, as I'm getting more familiar with how things work, we're trying to do more of that separation. So Monday, Catherine's in the building all day, I'm in the building all day, and it, and it's, it's very productive, we're getting a ton of work pushed out, and it's the board meeting day every other week. So that's working. The other days, we're trying to do some staggering. So my next day here is gonna be Thursday, Catherine's gonna come in tomorrow and probably Wednesday and not come in Thursday when I'm here, so we're, we're trying to do indeed that. Probably less the first day and more the second day to try to, try to make that work.
But could you pull some of those, those hours from Monday too? Where you guys don't have to be seven or eight hours at the same time Monday, could you do maybe three?
Yeah, and I think we can, I don't know the, the work with three, but we could, we could, we could stagger less, yeah, I mean, I could have Catherine come in a little bit later in the morning and it would probably still work, so we could do that, yeah. I, I think that would be helpful, and yes, I'm absolutely in agreement with that. I don't think it's gonna obviate the need for additional hours in order to get done what we need to get done, but as I said, the preface to this. I understand the board is sensitive to some real issues, i.e. having a staff person that was not approved at a town meeting. I am a stickler on that subject, and here I am advocating for the very opposite. And I feel badly about that because I have said to many department heads over the years, when they've asked for, you know, this kind of a thing to be done mid, no, town meeting didn't approve it, end of story. And it was just an inviolable rule, and here I am doing it, and all I can tell you is I'm doing it, you know, basically in, in, somewhat in desperation, to be honest with you, I mean, I.
But it should be, at least for the next week and a half or so, what's the date today?
Well, this week we're gonna be fine, and next week we're gonna be fine, because these next two weeks.
As we get into January, we can look at this and say, but are there things that, and I don't, I mean, I know it's been late and we all been working all day, are there things that, it's probably no, but I'm gonna ask anyways, are there things that we can do individually as members of the board to take on things that if we have an hour during the day or on, on a weekend or something, that we can take on to help mitigate some of that work?
You could, but, you know, I'm loath to ask you because you, you give the town a lot of time as a volunteer.
Well, it's extenuating circumstances, right? I mean, we all gotta roll up our sleeves and take on a little bit more.
Well, I, I would say honestly, Mike, for the next two weeks, Christmas week, New Year's week, we're fine with nineteen hours, that'll work. In fact, we talked about it today, and we just said nineteen's working this week and next week, and that's that. After that, I think it's gonna get busy again exponentially, because we're gonna be in the middle of a Treasurer recruitment, I've got some news coming that you'll like, Kathy. We're gonna be in the middle of pushing the budgets out and then taking them back in and getting it all assembled. Tax bills will be going out ASAP.
Right, we'll be looking at stamps and all that stuff.
Right after the first of the year is going to get enormous. So I don't think, as much as I think the next two weeks we can get by fine, I think right after that, it's gonna really spin up fast. The amount of work I've gotta push out for you is, is going to get very substantial.
And our meetings get longer too, because, but.
And I, I, for me to keep this pace up, I've gotta have help.
Right, but for an example, and this has nothing to do with Catherine as a person, she's great, but for an example, like tonight, I could run the Zoom meeting.
Yep.
Right, I could take notes, I could do, Kathy could take the minutes, or whatever we need to do to take those hours away so she's not four more hours tonight, those are something else.
Thank you, that's a good point. So one of the economies I want to suggest to the board, right now, you've got a recording secretary halfway across the state, literally halfway across the state, who has to get the, the, has to watch your meeting on YouTube, and then after watching the meeting, produce a set of minutes.
I already started doing the meeting minutes in the last meeting.
So I'm gonna eliminate that, because that is a horribly unproductive way to take minutes.
But Kathy takes that on.
No, I could, I could just do it, I know how to do it.
Well, if a board member wants to take the minutes, that would be wonderful, because what I was gonna say is eliminate that position, take that money we're budgeted for, put it toward those extra hours, Catherine will do the minutes, I'll sure, you know, make... Catherine will do the minutes, I'll sure, you know, make an expedition set of minutes. But if a board member wanted to do it, that's even better.
Let's start with trying to do that at the next meeting and see how it goes. So that's that's an easy fix.
And then the other thing was with the Zoom meetings. Just give them the code or whatever. You don't have to go to the board of health meetings or you. Eliminate going to other meetings unless you're specifically needed there.
Yeah, I think frankly, if you can run the Zoom. I I I know Catherine loves you all to death, but if she doesn't have to come here to your meeting, she'd be fine.
I mean, and I could, I think on my computer, I can actually look up my Bluetooth speaker to it.
That's probably two hours.
At least.
Right there, so yeah, that would be, that would be helpful.
I think that's part of my, my.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
My um assessment on this is that the hours are there, maybe you do need more, I mean, maybe they're right. That you do need more, that could definitely be a possibility. Maybe they're right saying that, or what I'm saying is the reallocation is shifting of things. Maybe it needs to be looked at, like with the hours tonight. The overlapping with you guys are are trying to do more, but maybe taking away some of that on Monday, moving it to a Thursday or whatever. I think with those adjustments, if we can take a kind of assessment on how that looks at that point. Then I'd be in a better position to be like, Jason's right, we need to add three more hours and see how that looks or Bill's right. We should be getting this done as it is.
All right, well, I'm hearing your message and um.
But I'm also willing to take on more, I mean, I know, like I said, I have a full-time job and I work fifty, sixty, seventy hours a week during that. Not to mention the stuff that comes along with this position, right? But I'm happy to take on more, I'll do stuff on the weekends. I can't go anywhere, right? So I may as well do something. I mean, I was, I had a call on Saturday because I wasn't doing anything.
Well, we'll we'll give that some thought. There's a practical way we can do that, but you know what it, I mean, is a. Usually it's the case, somebody does a job and then somebody tries to step in and do it in its, in its dock when it doesn't work, but. It may not be impossible.
I'm not saying I'm gonna do the budget because that's gonna be disaster, right?
But doing the minutes is a good example. Kathy's willing to do that, that's a real help. Um so let us give that some thought. Why don't we do this if it makes sense? The next two weeks were fine, we had nineteen hours. If the board would allow me to still maintain what I wanna do, which is come back to you in January at some point with a better analysis and a little more thought put into this. And see how things roll out once we start the new year. Then um if you give me that privilege to come back to you um with a more thoughtful analysis, then we'll make nineteen work till then.
And I do think that you're right, that come mid-January to the end of January, things are really gonna ramp up because that is our busy busy season. The meetings are gonna be longer, there's a lot to go through, there's a lot of weekend work that we gotta put into the budget and look at line items. I mean, we do have a good starting point with your two point five percent, which is great, so maybe that'll mitigate some of it. But I think um you know, that from my perspective, again, let's get past New Year's, let's get into January. Let's do the shift, see what that does. Kathy will take on the minutes, that's great. I'm willing to take on whatever monkey business you can give me that's not too intellectually challenged for me, you know.
I have not forgotten your offer to help stuff bills.
I was waiting for the email to come back next week to do it, so if it's at night for three or four hours, I'll grab my kids and wife and we'll go do it. So whatever it takes, I'm willing to help out. I know it's gonna be another struggle for at least another six months, but you know, I'll I'll roll up my sleeves and do more.
All right, well, sounds like a plan. I know the board spent a lot of time on this, I appreciate it. I know your time is valuable, but I really do appreciate you just spent a lot of time because it sounds like we came up with some good ideas and. Partial solutions, that's great.
So, get, we, next up is finance director this time. I know you have a couple of things you wanna go with, but if you can go really quickly.
Yep, two items for you.
Be super.
Because you're gonna like these. So, company with problems, now I got some good news. Uh the tax rate is set, we have been approved. Actually happened about fifteen, twenty minutes before the start of your meeting.
I saw that email come over.
Catherine gave you all a copy of the four-page recap. When I refer to the recap and I say all this work that's been going, it's not that four-page document. There's about well over a hundred pages of supplementary data. And a whole bunch of different reports that feeds those four pages, that's the summary report. But the good news, rate's set. Um the rate is. I'm the only one without one of those in front of me. So, I apologize, but if somebody can read the rate.
Fourteen dollars and seventy-two cents.
Thank you. So. I tried this afternoon to figure out what the average tax bill was and what that. Right now, your rate's at fourteen oh three, I think it is, fourteen oh seven, something like that. So it's a sixty-eight cent per thousand increase. So, it wasn't possible, we talked to the assessor, it wasn't possible to figure out an average bill. And even if we could. All we'd be saying is an average bill is four hundred and seventy-three thousand or something like that. It doesn't mean anything because everybody's home is different. So here's the formula, folks at home watching. Get your tax bill in a couple of weeks. Take the total assessed valuation on your home that shows on the tax bill. Divide it by one thousand, multiply it by the new tax rate. And that is your bill for one year. You pay one quarter of that bill and the January billing.
I mean, that's the increase.
I'm sorry?
That's the bill, that's the increase for the.
That's the total bill.
Well, that's the whole bill. If you wanna know what the increase is, just compare it to your last year bill. Now, here's the way it works. Municipalities on quarterly billings, the first two bills of the year, the one that goes in June, July. And the one that goes September, October. We haven't yet set the tax rate, so those are bills from the prior fiscal year. Okay? In January, you get your first real bill based upon what town meeting decided in the spring we were gonna spend. Then that bill in January is a real bill, you get another one in March, it's a real bill. And then the first two next year, June, July and September, October, are the same bills as this year. Those are the estimated bills from this year, but you get them next year, okay? Now. I put that out there because we get questions all the time, because people get distressed when they get their bill in two weeks. They say, oh my goodness, it went up so much. Yes, but it's because the full brunt of the fiscal year. The increase in spending which occurred at the spring town meeting doesn't get billed until January. And then again in the spring and then two times at the end of the year.
So it's not equal, it's weighted differently.
Lags by six months. So that's an important thing for people to understand. We'll get lots of calls, we're already working on a script that we're gonna. Have ready for people when they start calling and ask about it. The vast majority of this increase is what's right on that. I brought the, you might recognize that. That's in town hall and people can't see it anymore, so I brought it tonight. That was the estimate of what the cost would be of the new junior, senior high school. And it looks, from what I can analyze, like this, the numbers were dead on. I mean, somebody did a great job with that. Because it looks like with the tax increase that we just, that we'll be putting out. That bills are gonna go up in that range. Now, they're gonna go up a little less than that and the reason is because we had more growth than we expected. More more new tax addition to the uh to the base. And so it's not gonna be quite that much for most people, but that's pretty close to the effect. So if people are looking for an answer, you know, why did it go up sixty-eight cents per thousand, the the majority of it is that. Part of it is the normal prop two and a half. Your tax bill goes up every year by two or three percent. So. That's one thing I wanted to let the board know about. That was a lot of work to get the tax rate done. Good news, it's done. Now, uh what Kathy was talking about, I am indeed going to be advertising, putting it out tomorrow. All the, the reason I haven't done it before is I wanted to give the board the courtesy of saying to you, here's what I'm doing to sound okay. You've given me the authority in the job description to just move on this. And I was gonna do it last week frankly and I said, you know, it doesn't feel right to me. I think. The board should be included in this, um because there's a lot at stake. So, I concur, no matter what you do. Whether you go town administrator for him, you stay CFO. You should have a full-time treasurer collector because you've in essence had that. And we've been kind of dodging around it, time is to to make the decision. So I'm gonna advertise for a treasurer collector, not an assistant, treasurer collector. I mean frankly, the difference between an assistant and a full treasurer collector is very, very little because most assistants. Do the job for two or three years and then they leave and they go become a treasurer collector. If you hire a treasurer collector and you pay decently, you got a chance of keeping that person for a good long time. And you really don't wanna have the kind of turnover we've had on the financial offices in the last few months because this is really a son of a gun right now making this all work. So, um that'll go up. I interviewed, the minute I get um the assistant treasurer collector's resignation letter a couple of weeks ago. Within twenty minutes, I was on the phone calling um people that I know who were uh treasurer collectors. Identified five or six people who were available. And some of them were willing to come in, a lot of these folks are retired, a couple of them were in-between jobs. Now, the problem with in-between jobs is if that person gets a full-time job that they're out there looking for, you know, they give you two weeks and boom, they go back. The problem with retired people like me. I mean, a lot of people are bothered a lot more by COVID than I happen to be and it's a personal choice we all make. So I don't mind being in the building, I don't mind being out and around people. But four of the six candidates I identified would not come in the building, period, remote only. So, I said, my judgment is that's just not practical. Whoever does this interim treasurer job has to be in the building. Once, huh?
On those types of of people who don't wanna be in there when there's other people, would they be willing to do what they could remotely? And then come in after hours when nobody else is in there?
Yes, one of them said that he would be willing to do it. Now. So, what I'm, the the guy that I got right now, I mean, part of the problem here is that there's a nice pool of retired treasurers out there. But they don't wanna come in the building. And things are getting worse, not better, and they're just saying, look, I wouldn't come in now and I'm sure as heck not coming in after the first of the year. So, the two people that I had, neither one was a treasurer, but they're both town accountants. So, think of it as a town accountant's training is up here, treasurer's here and then. I would not offer to you that I can be a town accountant, I consider to be a treasurer, I've done it. Town accountant requires a much higher level of training. So, ideally, what I would have liked to find for you was a treasurer collector who was retired and who would come in the building at least a couple of days a week. Couldn't find it. Now, I'm still looking and frankly, if I find that person. I might change this interim thing from the guy that's gonna do it now until for someone else is better qualified. Of course, by the time that happens in a couple of weeks, this gentleman will probably be pretty well qualified. So, he came in today, met the staff, worked most of the day. Saw our systems and basically said, I don't think there's anything there that's so daunting, I can't figure it out now, you know. The hard part of doing this isn't, and I think you were saying this, Jason, earlier. The hard part isn't doing the job, he knows how to do it, I know how to do it. The hard part is knowing, okay, where in the computer is, are all the bank accounts? And, you know, which ones do we take the money, do we put the money in and which ones do we take it out in order to, so it's all in inertia. That's gotta, and you gotta get passwords done and it's just a huge amount of work that you gotta get done in order to just be able to be productive. I think probably gonna take him a week, week and a half before he he can even be productive. What he told me is, oh, he'll be in the building. So I said, great. He's willing to do that. So for the short term, i.e. Three or four weeks, he'll probably be here three days a week, maybe four. Helping Michelle who, and I mentioned Michelle by name as opposed by title, as you do title, but I mentioned Michelle by name because she is doing a phenomenal job. Really stepped up big time. Um and Caitlin did a good job training her and being helpful to us before she started her new job today. So, I would say to you, we're okay right now, I think we're getting by okay. I think we'll be okay, but it's a lot of stepping up and a lot of effort. And your town accountant, Ellen, I I'm telling you folks, we ought to be, we ought to canonize her, she's just, she's been phenomenal, just phenomenal. So, at some point, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, when the time is right and we get through a couple more weeks and. I think maybe uh there's some commendational letters in store here for some people.
Absolutely.
Some recognition by the board because your people are stepping up big time and kudos to them. So, I know uh you wanted me to be brief, I apologize when on, but I didn't wanna get all that on for you.
That's good, no, we needed that information.
Generally okay?
Yeah, no, the we, I mean.
You got the info done.
The meetings are long, but you know, there's stuff that we gotta get through and iron out, so. So real quickly, we'll do selectmen times, which I only had one thing, I wonder if everyone got a chance to read Joe DeMore's email on the government study. He asked for guidance on what his plan is as far as next year and rolling out information to department heads and then the employees. I didn't have a problem with it, but I wanted the board to weigh in to see if they had any issues with it, Ed.
Yeah, I read the thing over and and again, in this, you're giving Catherine more, more duties.
With the emails, I did understand that, correct?
With with the email that we got from the committee, uh there's, there's a lot of things for Catherine to do. Here uh in her nineteen hours a week.
But something like that, could those emails come to me? You know, and then I can take that on to disseminate that information.
You know what, that would be helpful.
So, aside from that stuff that naming Catherine again as a catch-all. We're gonna have to get you a bigger net. Becomes an hour and I pay you and everything else.
See, that that's part of the wonderful problem. She's very enthusiastic.
So, on side of that, I mean, I can take that piece. But did anybody else have any concerns about the structure that Joe was presenting?
Sounds good.
All right, so everyone's in agreement that I can tell Joe to. I'm done. Anybody have anything else?
Mike, when you, when Joe sends that out, did he change that and say, department had submitted comments to you, to the chairman?
I'll make sure that he does that, yep. Uh people will not like that, but.
Can I ask you a question? He sends me like his agenda to post and type up and things like that, is all that supposed to go to you?
I mean, it could, I guess.
Well, cause he can't, doesn't come in the town hall, that's why. So he doesn't type it, he didn't, he sends it to you?
He does type it and I transfer onto a a meeting posting.
Oh, okay, so that's just a couple of minutes. Right, it's all typed, right?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
It it doesn't take a long time, I just wanted to make sure that I, if it's going to Mike, then it goes to Mike.
Well, I was more taking on this government study process that he wanted, but if if you're saying that I can save you five minutes by doing.
I'm not asking you to, I just wanted to make sure I I sent it in the right direction, that's all.
I think Catherine's asking you, okay if she posts those, she doesn't wanna overstep.
Post meetings, she's posting the agendas, yeah, yeah, that's.
And if you want me to do it, then I'll do it.
Not a question of workload, it's a question of she doesn't wanna overstep.
Well, don't worry about stepping on my toes, I don't care. Ed, do you have anything for selectmen time?
I I do not.
Jason?
Uh the only thing I have is I sat in on the water department's meeting. A little while ago and they talked about doing a feasibility study for a water treatment plant. So I was rather excited about that and thought everybody would like to know about it. It is expensive, but when you look at doing it over the life expectancy, it really changes the cost of that. Also, they got together with Rennie about doing a capital project. Potentially, they still have to work out some of the details, it's a smaller project, but that will save money for the town. And if they can do more of that in the future, that can offset some of those costs for a water treatment plant. So unfortunately, I did wanna sit on the meeting, but they had it today at four thirty at the same time.
Yeah, well, you've been here for four hours. Bill, anything?
Yes, I've got a couple of things and I'll be very brief. First of all, the high school, uh middle school project is going along quite nicely. So I wanted to, being this is the last meeting of the year, wanted to update the board members as well as general public, I was going. As of today's date, we're approximately twenty percent uh through completion of uh construction. And uh it's great news because as of this point in time, we are not. We are not on, uh we're not always. We're on schedule and we're on budget.
That's it.
And at this point in time, we have not yet dipped into any of the contingency money that we have for. Unanticipated projects or occurrences that'll inevitably occur. And the nice part is we're so, uh the project is going along so well that a lot of the value engineered items. That we originally had to take out of the project to meet the budget, we've been able to add back in. So, that's huge. So a lot of things that we didn't think we were gonna get, we've been able to add back and without touching any contingency. So we're really doing a great job right now on that project and hopefully that continues. And then last, this is the last meeting of the year, I just wanna recognize some heroes out there. This has been an incredible year, I don't have to remind anybody of that, to say anything less would be an understatement. But I just wanna thank our local law enforcement, our fire department, our EMTs. They've done an incredible job in incredible circumstances, and they never flinch, not once. They just answer the call and answer the bell each and every time. And everybody in this town ought to be proud of those folks, because we have the best. I wanna thank the doctors, the nurses, the folks that pick up our trash consistently every day, the folks that show up to the grocery stores so that we can buy food in this pandemic. They're taking an awful risk and they're doing it for us. The teachers that continue to go to school every day to educate our kids, thank you so much. The Board of Health, the Council on Aging, it's been a very difficult time for you, and I wanna thank you all again. Words cannot express my gratitude for the difficulty you've been in and the extraordinary work and commitment you've made to the town and to the folks in this town, and I wanna thank you. I know you don't hear it enough, it can't be said too often. And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and my wishes and prayers that 2021 is exceedingly better than 2020 has ever been. Thank you.
That'd be, Kathy?
I'll make it real short, I wanna echo Selectman O'Neill's shout-out to the whole town to thank everybody who is working and parenting and being there for people during this really, really tough time. And to just say that, you know, you're doing a good job. Get up every day and recognize that maybe you don't have everything you want. You could see tonight that we can't give everyone the hours that would be great to give them, but you're doing a good job. And keep going, because we are getting to the end of this, and just enjoy the holidays, try to relax, have some fun. Happy New Year almost.
Motion adjourned at seven forty-two.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, thanks Brett.
Brett, thank you, you're awesome out there, kid.